Okay, I called, I called to order the regular meeting of the Beaverton City Council. City Recorder, please call the role.
Um, for the record, Mayor Beatty is absent. Um, Counselor Duggar. Uh, Counselor Duggar is showing on the screen. Counselor Hartmeier Prigg?
Here.
Counselor Hassan?
Here.
Counselor Kimmy?
Here.
Counselor Teeter?
Here, and Counselor Duggar, you're speaking, but it was just a little quiet at first. Here.
May I continue with the role?
Yes, sorry.
Counselor Tiv Don?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin tonight's agenda with visitor comments, then we will move on to three proclamations, two work sessions, the consent agenda, and council new business. City Recorder, do we have any visitors wishing to comment tonight?
Uh, yes, Council President, and you have, I believe, three cards, and I've got three more for you. I'll bring in just a second.
All right. Visitor comments provide the opportunity for the community to speak about matters, even if they are not on the agenda. Visitor comments are limited to three minutes. For each person, visitors may state their comments and should not expect the council to engage in back and forth dialogue regarding the comments, as this is a time for a council to hear from the community. If follow-up is needed, our city manager and city recorder are taking notes. With that, we'll begin with in-person visitors wishing to speak and then move on online. Council is also in receipt of the written comments provided by Nancy and Ralph Nagel. Spencer Ehrman, please come up to the microphone and be seated. You have three minutes to address the council. We'll set the timer when you are speaking.
Counselor Kimmy and members of council, uh, thanks for this opportunity. I am Spencer Ehrman. I'm Vice Chair of the Human Rights Advisory Commission here in Beaverton. I want to speak briefly regarding the Polis Solutions Report being presented this evening. HTRAC has an interest in this matter since you engaged Polis. In 2020, following the murder of George Floyd, you charged HTRAC to begin a series of conversations with the Beaverton Police Department regarding their policies and procedures. And in January of 2021, HTRAC presented council with our report. That you were receiving the Polis presentation today is, we believe, partly a result of that report and HTRAC's ongoing attention to BPD operations and policies. Upon request earlier this year, we submitted some comments and questions through the city manager's office regarding the Polis report, which I hope will be addressed in the presentation. A couple of our issues. How did Polis account for the needs of the entire community based on the opinions of only eighteen people already engaged in community leadership? We feel that that is a small sample. Trust in the community is an issue that looms large in all municipalities and jurisdictions post George Floyd. Why did Polis recommend a police department chief-appointed advisory panel rather than an independent community-based board? There are many examples of these panels across many jurisdictions and communities, which improve communication between law enforcement and the communities they serve. We're well aware that Beaverton isn't Portland. There is a great deal of violence in Portland, and the police department in Portland is currently operating a Department of Justice mandated agreement for operations. We don't have to deal with that level of problem. Portland is, uh, currently engaged in implementing a police oversight panel to be populated by members of the community. That's unlikely to be necessary here in Beaverton. Oversight is a strong word. But the Human Rights Commission would hope that you will be moved beyond the letter of this report and involve the community in an active engagement with the police department, which would be to the benefit of all concerned. An independent panel could be far, far more effective in achieving open communication and transparency than a department-appointed advisory group. Thanks.
Thank you. We have Karen James. Please come up to the microphone. You have three minutes to address the council.
Counselor Kimmy and counselors, thank you. I'm Karen James, longtime Beaverton resident. I spoke to you about this issue in February of 2022. I'm a parent and legal guardian to an adult son who suffers with mental illness and addiction. And for over twenty years, I've watched my son's struggles, and often he could not get the help he needed. Uh, he had to go to prison to, uh, receive mental health treatment finally. He is still not receiving it in Washington County adequately. And, uh, at that time, when I spoke to the council in 2022, I, um, asked that Beaverton, uh, form a Beaverton Street Response Program. This is what we needed, uh, at that time, I felt. And as a result of this report, um, which, uh, the report states that forty percent of all reported uses of force by the Beaverton Police occurred during a mental health response. Uh, I say this again, we need a Beaverton uh, a street response, like a hoots or the Portland Street Response, that does not include a police response. At that time in 2022, uh, Beaverton, uh, partnered with Washington County's Mental Health Response Team. And I don't know if you're aware that Washington County was recently sued by Disability Rights Oregon and the ACLU for its police response to mental health crises. Uh, Disability Rights Oregon and, and the ACLU said that, uh, Washington County was in violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, that it has made law enforcement its de facto mental health mobile crisis system, that, uh, uh, it routinely treats people experiencing a mental health crisis as if they are criminals who have committed a crime by dispatching tactically trained and armed law enforcement instead of trained mental health professionals. And, and my list goes on and on from, from the, uh, from the lawsuit itself. I hope you'll take time to read that lawsuit. So I am once again asking that the city of Beaverton take care of its people that are suffering with addiction and mental illness by not sending armed police and doing, quite frankly, an injustice to our law enforcement. They are not trained, and crisis intervention just does not cut it. Forty hours. After twenty years, I still do not understand my son's behaviors and don't know how to react to them, quite frankly. And how is forty hours of crisis intervention training going to help a, a police officer know how to respond in a mental health crisis? We need medical, mental health professionals to take care of these crises. Please consider a Beaverton Response Team without the police response. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jessica McBride, please come up to the microphone. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, Counselor Kimmy and counselors. I am Jessica McBride, currently serving as the BCCI Chair. However, tonight I am representing the Beaverton Advocates for Community Safety. I'm here to talk about the Polis report on the Beaverton Police Department's use of force policies and protocols. I want to first acknowledge that this report shows some encouraging data points and trends. However, the report also emits several important perspectives, data collection areas, and underrepresented approaches to the data and policing as a whole. The report developed over sixteen months in collaboration between BPD and Polis was meant to cover a range of topics, including incorporating data and tracking, including for racial profiling bias and equity, internal accountability, training and education, and community relationships and accountability and transparency. Unfortunately, none of these topics are adequately addressed in the final report. Some, like racial profiling bias and equity topics, are explicitly dismissed on page thirteen. These are not the values of our community. BPD's reported use of force is well below the national average, which is incredible both for our police department and for our community as a whole. Still forty percent of reported use of force instances, um, occurred during a mental health response. We urge the council and the Beaverton Police Department to consider proven strategies to continue to reduce uses of force, such as increasing de-escalation and anti-bias training, implementing mental health partnerships like Kahoots, and adopting campaign zero best practices. BPD's internal accountability measures are important, and we appreciate the Polis Report's recommendations to clarify these policies. Unfortunately, there is an absence of community oversight. While the report recommends a citizen advisory board on page sixty-six, it is advised that the body should not have any kind of independent oversight mandate or authority. We feel the report's recommendation would not foster an authentic lasting community relationship or give the community true accountability over the police department that serves its members. A true community oversight board to partner with BPD is needed. Finally, it was alarming to read that BPD has already begun to act upon a Polish recommendation to purchase every officer an individual rifle before the council accepted the final report. We believe this to be a policy decision that should involve council input. We, as community members, along with various organizations, have come together to present you with an open letter for your consideration. The letter will be sent to you at seven PM tonight, as well as to the city recorder. Thank you for your time and attention in creating a safer and more equitable Beaverton.
Thank you. Let's have, um, Tino Juarez come up to the podium. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here regards on, uh, item number two, four, zero, sixteen, Cooper Mountain. And my name is, uh, Tino, and I'm a local carpenter that works in the Portland metro. And I read through the packet that there's a lot of conversation regarding funds. And there's always talks about ways to incentivize developers to build in our community. I understand the need for these types of discussions for infrastructure for the future and the advancement of the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. But as we are thinking about the future, let's bear in mind what's going on right now in our city. Developers are incentivized not only with, uh, help and aid of local resources, but they are given, uh, things like low-income tax credits, tact exempt bonds, all while hiring illicit contractors. I just met a female worker this past week that because of her status, she was charged ten to twelve percent to cash her check. Not only that, but job site safety standards are not upheld, and the workers are paid under the table, and they're treated just like a commodity. Has this developer really considered what the city of Beaverton actually needs? And does it align with the values of this council's goals, such as not just housing and a quality infrastructure? But is there language that actually protects the men and women that will work on this project? I understand that the developer may have its policies on picking its contractor. But let's be honest and real here this evening. Historically, those languages and policies are never held. There's no teeth. There's no accountability, and let's be honest, Bully and OSHA are understaffed. But what has, what have we done as local leaders and city council representatives to make, to make sure that the story that I just told you doesn't happen again on this future development? What is going on, on the city level that we can hold contractors accountable? Not just thinking about affordable housing and programs that ensure homeownership, but we don't need as a city more handouts. What we need is an opportunity, an opportunity to make a livable wage. And not just a livable wage, but to not be taken advantage of. I highly encourage that this, the city of Beaverton implements language that ensures responsible contracting and ensures compliance with the city's goals and values. Thank you for your attention tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Heather Mather? Please come up to the podium. You have, uh, three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Heather Mather. I am a carpenter. Can you hear me? There we go. Hey, um, I'm a carpenter. I've been working in the state of Oregon for about twenty years. Um, and looking over, uh, this packet that I got when I came here today, you know, one of the summaries, uh, summary goal was to create equitable outcomes for residents, including underserved and underrepresented communities. Um, I'm here tonight specifically for the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. Um, first ten years that I worked as a carpenter, I worked for one of those illicit contractors that my brother mentioned. Um, I didn't get healthcare. I didn't have a pension. I was making below area standard wages. Certainly couldn't afford to buy a house in the communities that I build in. Um, two thousand and eleven, my husband and I welcomed triplets. That's again, one, two, three, uh, with no healthcare. Um, I had to go on public assistance. Went on a, a list for housing. Um, shortly after, I was able to gain work with a contractor who was responsible in their work practices. Um, I began making a living wage, had bought my first home. I have healthcare, uh, for my whole family. Um, you know, it's, it's been quite a difference, but what I'm seeing in here is, you know, um, a lot of strategies on, again, as Brother Tino said, you know, uh, affordable housing. I don't want affordable housing. I want to work in the community that I live in, making a living wage. And the only way we can do that or ensure that is to make sure that those contractors are being responsible. Um, what I would ask tonight is that the city of Beaverton, you know, again, in this packet, citywide strategies, why I've got one for you, we should add a subcontractor transparency ordinance. This requires the disclosure of subs that applied to all new commercial multifamily right-of-way, which is again, providing transportation of energy, water, and sewer, which you folks are here to talk about today. Um, I think it's one of the easy ways that the city of Beaverton can assist in making sure that this worker exploitation doesn't happen on any more Beaverton projects. Again, it is, uh, pretty successful in the city of San Diego subcontractor transparency ordinance. If you're not aware of what that looks like, I would urge you to look it up, educate yourselves. If you have questions, we can help educate you as well. I hope you guys have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Coughlin Jr., please come up. You have, uh, three minutes to address the council.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, committee members and City Hall. My name is Michael Coughlin. Infrastructure funding challenges for this project, the Cooper Mountain Project, uh, wouldn't be as significant as they are if all contractors were paying their taxes and contributing to the communities they develop the benefit off of. Well, too often, these contractors make money off the back of the exploitation of the workforce, the local workforce. You being the leaders of this city and these communities, I would imagine that that strikes home for you to hear this. And requiring disclosure of subcontractors, the city and the county's goal is to create a culture of safety and legal compliance while ensuring that labor standards are upheld. Transparency created by the new subcontractor disclosure can also help identify labor violations and unqualified operatives and assure accountability on all projects moving forward, all projects. My ask of you tonight is for us to add a subcontractor transparency ordinance language to the expectations of the developers, the general contractors, and the subcontractors. Without these measures, the working class and the community as a whole will continue to suffer. Thank you for your time. I hope you think about this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, four people online. Yeah. So we'll move on to the online comments. Johnny Greenbelt, Greenblatt. You're muted, and you have three minutes to address the council. You can start the timer when you start speaking.
Good evening, Council. My name is Johnny, Johnny Greenblatt. I have noticed a huge increase in antisemitism since the October seventh attack. And I think that this is not really founded in facts. I think it's just founded on propaganda, um, as it has been previously by over a hundred and nine nations in a hundred, sorry, a thousand and thirty times. I mean, most recently, myself, who is Jewish, my people have been kicked out of Yemen and Afghanistan in the last couple of years. And then in twenty fourteen, my people have been kicked out of San Juan, La Laguna, Guatemala. In nineteen seventy-two, seventy-two, sorry, it was Uganda. In nineteen sixty-eight, it was Poland. In nineteen sixty-three, it was Algeria. Fifty-nine, it was Cuba. Fifty-six, it was Egypt. In nineteen forty-eight and forty-nine, we were kicked out of Yemen once again. In nineteen forty-eight, it was Morocco. Thankfully, we're back in Jerusalem, but my people were expelled from Jerusalem in nineteen forty-eight and from the West Bank. Now, you can see that we have a very troubled history of persecution and of pogroms. And this time, we are going to stand up for ourselves. Um, I see all this talk about ceasefire resolutions, and I, I should hope that we can not worry about an issue on a municipal level that is happening on the other side of the world, because Israel has a right to exist. Who cares? All these Palestinians should be martyrs. They've been attacking us forever. The IDF has been accused of bombing hospitals. They've been accused of bombing civilians. Good. All the people in Gaza want my people dead. So I think that it's time that Israel commits a full show of force and does what it has been doing since its inception, since my people accepted the land that the British gave us that has been our chosen people's land, our God-given right, given it to us by Yahweh. And we need to eradicate every single Palestinian that is there that poses a threat. That child throwing a rock at an IDF soldier yesterday? Well, two years later, he's going to be shooting a rocket. And maybe the Iron Dome doesn't get, get it. Maybe it doesn't shoot it down, and we could lose some Jewish lives. Everyone knows that Jewish lives are the most important lives, and the lives of this scum in Gaza does not matter. So I would like everyone to please note that everyone in Palestine is a terrorist. That baby who's nursing at the breast in fifteen years will be out there screaming Alahu Akbar and be coming at us with sharp rocks, coming at us with tableware, silverware, everything they can get their hands on. Thank you.
Okay, um, Moldikai Felchbaum, you have three minutes to address council.
Oh, good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. As you are probably aware, uh, my people have been kicked out of a hundred and nine nations because we have been accused of poisoning the well, coin clipping, having sex with children, lending money at obscene interest, monopolizing the media, education, health, and legal systems, and eating foreskins. Um, and frankly, I am so sick of being accused of these crimes. Jew after Jew after Jew has to deal with this hate speech. And I would like this council to increase the penalties for hate speech. It's disgusting that I can't mutilate my Goyim neighbor's three-year-old son without him complaining and calling me a dirty Jew. It's disgusting. Goyim shouldn't even be allowed to say the word Jew. Kebab Moss Law clearly states that I can jizz on a three-year-old without being interrupted by a filthy Goy. My people are the chosen people, and we have earned the right to fuck kids uninterrupted from screeching from Goy. Here are some quotes from my, uh, my Chosenites book, the Talmud. Yebamoth ninety-eight A, "All non-Jew children are animals." Sanhedrin fifty-seven A, "When a Jew murders a non-Jew, there will be no death penalty." Kebab Moss eleven B, "A man who engaged in intercourse with a girl less than three years of age has done nothing." Kebab Moss eleven six A, "Jews must destroy books of the Christians," like the New Testament. Baba Metziel, uh, one fourteen B, "The non-Jews are not human. They are beasts." Gittin fifty-seven A, "Jesus is in hell, being boiled in hot excrement." Baba comma, one thirteen A, "Jews may use lies," subterfuge, "to circumvent the non-Jews." Sanhedrin fifty-seven A, "What a Jew steals from a non-Jew, he may keep." Sanhedrin fifty-eight B, "If a non-Jew hits a Jew, he must be killed." Yalkut two forty-five C, "Extermination of the Christians is a necessary sacrifice." Zoha eleven sixty A, "Jews must always try to deceive Christians." So there we go, council. So we are the Chosenites, and you need to implement some, uh, you need to up these hate speech laws. Thank you.
Okay, this is going to be my, our last public comment. Sapki, you're up. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hi there. Thank you so much. Uh, my name is Sapki Pacheco Williams. I wasn't intending to only listen this evening. I wasn't intending to give public comment, but I just wanted to jump in before the rest of council meeting continues this evening to just have a moment of peace. I think what we just heard in public comment is absolutely just sad and disgusting, but mostly sad. I also just wanted to raise a point that, um, you know, as Chair of the Human Rights Advisory Commission last year, we wrote a letter about, uh, how global events have a local impact. Um, while I know that there were a lot of mixed emotions about that letter, it led ultimately to a, a statement of peace, uh, given by the city to, you know, the city of Beaverton, and I just want to highlight again how important it is to realize that global events do have local impact, right? Um, I don't want us to forget that. Okay, and that was it. It was just to give us a moment of peace coming off of the last two public comments. Thank you guys so much for your time and looking forward to the rest of tonight's council meeting.
Thank you. That concludes our visitor comments for this evening. Um, we'll move on to proclamation.
So just for the record, you had written public comments submitted by Nancy and Ralph Nagel. And we also had some written public comment come in late from, um, Jordan Ramish, um, attorneys. So we made copies for you, but we'll update the packet tomorrow.
Thank you. So next, we have three pro- proclamations to read this evening. Counselor Hassan, will you read the first proclamation?
Yes, um, we're here today to read a proclamation for the city of Beaverton for, uh, Transgender Day of Visibility. Whereas International Transgender Day of Visibility was founded on March thirty-first, two thousand and nine by transgender activist Rachel Crandall to celebrate the achievements of transgender and gender non-conforming people and to raise awareness of the discrimination they face. And whereas the city of Beaverton is committed to fostering a diverse and inclusive community where all individuals are valued, respected, and treated with dignity. And whereas the transgender community is an integral part of our city, enriching our cultural fabric through their unique experiences, talents, perspectives. And whereas this day also serves as an opportunity to raise awareness of the challenges faced by the transgender people, including discrimination, prejudice, and the need for the continued advocacy for equal rights and protections. And whereas the city of Beaverton acknowledges the rich diversity within our community, including transgender and gender non-conforming residents, and recognizes the importance of creating an environment that is welcoming, supportive, and affirming for all. And whereas by promoting awareness and understanding, we strive to build a more compassionate and inclusive city, cultivating a sense of belonging for everyone, regardless of gender identity. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Beaverton does hereby proclaim- Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Beaverton does hereby proclaim March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four as Transgender Day of Visibility in the City of Beaverton.
Thank you. Um, now, Counselor Tifna, will you read the proclamation?
Thank you, Council President. This is a proclamation on behalf of the Office of the Mayor of the City of Beaverton. Whereas trees are a vital part of our community, providing numerous environmental, social and economic benefits. And whereas trees help to clean the air we breathe, reduce stormwater runoff, provide shade and cooling, and contribute to the overall beauty and livability of our city. And whereas Oregon Arbor Month was established by the Oregon State Legislature to encourage tree planting and tree care as well as to generate an appreciation of the environment. And whereas the city of Beaverton recognizes that trees and parks are important to enhance the beauty of the city and actively encourages the planting and care of trees throughout the city. And whereas forty million trees are planted in Oregon's National Forest each year and millions of other trees are planted in Oregon cities and on private forest land. Overall, in America, four million trees are planted every day. And whereas the city of Beaverton has planted and maintains over seven thousand trees on city land and over thirty thousand street trees and adds new street trees each year to enhance the quality of the neighborhood environment. And whereas the city of Beaverton has been recognized for thirty years as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, will receive a growth award from Tree City USA for the nineteenth year and desires to continue its tree planting efforts. Now therefore, on behalf of Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, I do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-four as Arbor Month in the City of Beaverton and urge all residents to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands.
Thank you. Do we have people who's gonna receive the proclamation? All right, let's take a picture together.
My name is Jared Lane. I'm the city arborist of Beaverton. I just wanted to let everybody know for Arbor Month to celebrate trees, plant trees, look at them out the windows, uh, celebrate all the beautiful flowering cherry plum trees right now. So whatever you can to touch a tree and celebrate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hartmirek, please read the third proclamation.
A proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Beaverton. Whereas the month of April twenty twenty-four marks the fifty-sixth anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status and national origin. And whereas Oregon Fair Housing Law guarantees that housing throughout the state of Oregon should be made available to all citizens without regard to marital status, source of income, sexual orientation, including gender identity, and survivors of domestic violence. And whereas fair housing benefits the community by providing economic stability, increasing community health, and by improving human relations in all communities through diversity and integration. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are unacceptable to a common sense of decency and fairness. Therefore, on behalf of Lacy Beatty, the mayor of the City of Beaverton, I do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-four as Fair Housing Month in the City of Beaverton and urge all residents to observe this month by reaffirming our commitment to fair housing for all and joining the effort to promote and support fair housing.
Thank you. Do we have people who's gonna make a comment or, uh, we see a picture? No? No, okay. We will now move on to our presentations. The next, uh, next, uh, item on the agenda is the work session regarding the force response policy and practice review by Polis Solutions. We will begin with the work session with a presentation of the policy board by Jonathan Wender, President and CEO of Polis, and Denise Rodriguez, Senior Program Manager at Polis. When the presentation is done, each consulate will have the opportunity to comment on the report and ask questions of the speaker. You can begin your presentation.
Thank you, Council President. Um, CNN Council, Cia Lindstrom, your Assistant City Manager, and I'm gonna make a few introductory comments um, before Polis, uh, Solutions begins their presentation. Um, at the end, um, we're gonna have a few comments by our BPD leadership as well before we turn it over to you for, uh, for conversation with our, with our Polis team here. So, um, as, as Council President mentioned, we have Jonathan Wender and Denise Rodriguez with us um, from Polis Solutions. I've asked them, um, to make some introductory remarks to, to tell us a little bit about who they are and their background and experience that they're bringing. Um, so they'll do that at the beginning of their presentation. I also want to use this opportunity to, to thank the project team internally who worked with us on this. This project is a long time in the making and we've been working on it for a while now. And so, uh, Kenya Williams, our Chief Equity Officer, Lanny Parr, Public Involvement Manager, um, Jesse Hall, our Program Specialist and Deputy Chief, were all part of the internal team that helped shepherd this process. So I appreciate their, their support for all this. The next slide. So first, a, a quick review of the purpose of this review. Um, the council asked City, the City Manager to identify a third-party consultant and specifically to do that through a competitive process in order to con- uh, conduct a comprehensive and objective review of Beaverton Police Policies and Procedures related to force response. So in early twenty twenty-three, the city hired Polis Solution. Um, you'll see, um, on the screen, we pulled some of the language from the RFP um, around the, uh, what we wanted the review to include. Um, to look at existing accountability systems related to force response, to include all three divisions of Beaverton Police Department, and to conclude with findings and recommendations and an implementation plan, which is why we're here tonight. Next slide. So the consultant process, the consultant selection process was a robust one. Um, even though it was not required by procurement rules, we did go through a formal RFP process. We had, uh, seven proposals, very strong ones submitted. Um, we had an, uh, review panel, RFP review panel, that included members of HREC, DAB, and the community that helped us review those. Uh, we did narrow it to three consultants and, um, we did interviews with those three consultant firms and it was unanimous at the end that Polis Solutions was the right choice for us. They, they identified several strengths, uh, of Polis. One, they had both law enforcement and non-law enforcement background. And you'll see that in their, their, um, presentation tonight. They're very well-rounded, have, uh, good data and data analytics experience, and they have recent experience with the county. Um, so they know us well. One of the things the review panel asked was to have Polis make their equity lens even more robust in their proposal. And so they have brought us, um, a really diverse and experienced team. So you'll see that represented in the work they're giving us tonight. The next slide. So, um, at the end of the, uh, presentation, we'll bring this slide back, but uh, these are the key questions for your consideration tonight. Um, so this is an opportunity, this is kind of our last opportunity for us to have our independent consultants give us their, um, experience and their opinions about, um, this review. So we really hope we'll use, you'll use the time with them to ask them about the review process, about their recommendations and on any advice they have for implementing those recommendations. Um, we also hope you'll give us feedback, um, for BPD leadership and for the City Manager's Office about, uh, next steps. So we'll bring this slide back at the end, um, in case it's useful for you on framing the key questions for consideration. So with that, I am gonna turn it over to our Polis team, Jonathan and Denise, to kick us off.
Thank you. I can just get this. Am I hot? On? Okay. Counselors, community members, members of the Beaverton Police Department, it's our honor and pleasure to be here with you this evening to present this report to you. I'm Jonathan Wender. I'm President and Co-Founder of Polis Solutions. By way of brief introduction, I'm a twenty-year police veteran. I served in the Seattle area. And I'm a social scientist whose passion and area of expertise is face-to-face human interactions in situations where risk is high and trust is low. Uh, you can read a little bit more about my background in the report. I don't want to belabor that, but let me just briefly yield to my colleague, Ms. Denise Rodriguez, to introduce herself. And we will dive into the weeds with you.
All right. Good evening, Denise Rodriguez. Um, just briefly, a little bit about my background. Um, it's more so in research, so I'm not former law enforcement. I'm so, uh, working with police agencies all around, uh, reform issues. So looking at use of force, policies, training, community engagement efforts, internal investigation, as well as some oversight work. Um, did spend a little bit of time with the city of Fort Worth as their deputy monitor over their, um, newly created Office of Oversight over the Police Department. Um, I'm also currently the Deputy Monitor on the Puerto Rico Consent decree, as well as an Associate Monitor focused on impartial policing for the Chicago Police Department. Um, yeah, so I've worked with Jonathan for a couple of years now. We've done similar assessments for the Long Beach, the city of Long Beach around, um, oversight. And I've also recently completed a, an assessment for the Minneapolis Police Department focused on, um, officer wellness. And thank you.
That's okay. There we go. All right. I, I have a loud voice. I'm trying to modulate a little bit. I'll try not to touch this. So, uh, we understand that dialogue around police use of force is often framed in a needlessly negative way. I want to offer some opening comments around the relatively strong conditions of the Beaverton Police Department and the community in Beaverton. As Denise alluded to, we work around the country with departments of all kinds. And one of the abiding challenges of police reform is that when something bad happens with one police department, there's sometimes a tendency to paint every police department with the same brush. While it can be instructive to look at the experiences of other departments, other communities, we respectfully suggest to the Beaverton Police Department, to the community it serves, that you really try to focus intramurally on specific local conditions here. Those conditions, as we found, are overwhelmingly positive. You have in Beaverton a professional progressive agency, serving a progressive, safe community. There is no police department I have ever seen that cannot benefit from reform and soul-searching and hard work to improve. Nor have I seen a community that cannot benefit as well from soul-searching and hard work to build greater trust. But I want to begin by highlighting the relative strength of this department and its community. To that point, and I recognize this is a point of controversy for some, for, for some folks, we do not see the need in Beaverton for an independent oversight body. We got, recognize there are a number of bodies currently, uh, empaneled with which the police department works. Uh, we believe wholeheartedly in the concept of engagement-based policing, which means at root that departments are building trust one interaction at a time, most important at the grassroots level in most marginalized areas of any given community. At their best, oversight boards can provide an avenue for dialogue, for trust-building. At the same time, departments have to make difficult choices about how best to use scarce resources. And our respectful recommendation is that the Beaverton Police Department double down on grassroots outreach and think strategically about the benefit of, of oversight boards and advisory boards and think through how to avoid duplicative efforts. We have some key concerns around gaps in policy, which paradoxically are the result of the fact that this department has had little or no litigation related to use of force. Complaint rates, rates here are very low, use of force here is very low. And because the department has such high standards and high training, we haven't seen the kind of pressure testing that we see in other communities. To put some numerical context around this, the Beaverton Police Department uses force on about one out of every six hundred contacts. Uh, nationwide, police use force about one to three percent of the time, so about one out of three contacts out of a hundred involve use of force. Use of force rate in Beaverton is under point two percent. As much as we think the department deserves credit for that, credit should be shared equally by the community. The fact that the police department uses force so infrequently is testament not just to the professionalism of the officers and to the leadership here, but also to the community, which even in fraught circumstances, when tensions are high, collaborates and cooperates with officers almost all the time. I think everybody in this room agrees one use of force is one too many. At the same time, as a neutral outside voice, we want to be honest with the community, we want to be honest with the council. Eliminating the use of force from policing is impossible. All right. I know it's a utopian dream that some folks share, but it is no more possible to remove force from policing than it is to remove painful procedures from healthcare and medicine. The reality, in fact, is that given the low use of force rates here, driving them down further is tough. Um, the department here has about a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and fifty uses of force a year, a couple a week. For a police department serving a city of a hundred thousand people to use force twice a week is pretty astonishingly low. We strongly recommend further training, further revisions to policy, further efforts to improve everything within the department's capacity to drive down use of force. At the same time, there's a limit to what officers can do unilaterally to drive down use of force rates. And we just want to be honest with the council and with the community about that reality. What we think the department can influence most is trust. The essence of policing is trust, the ultimate end goal of policing is trust, and that we think should be the focus of the reform efforts going forward. Next slide, please. The context of the report, and I've already, uh, started to allude to this. What we want to do here is not presume to offer an airtight set of solutions. We think our recommendations offer a good roadmap for the department and the community. They're not the be-all, end-all for the hard work of democratic policing that this community requires. The report begins with what we hope is an honest, intellectual and, and educational overview for readers on the inevitability of the use of force. And we know some of the language, um, may upset readers who are unfamiliar with the operational realities and exigencies of policing. But we think we owe it to the community to be clear-eyed and honest about the inevitability and role of force in policing, even under the most compassionate and restrained circumstances. We also want to highlight the fact that use of force is a shared challenge that has to involve both police departments and communities. We often hear the question of force framed as a police problem. We see it more broadly as a problem and challenge for departments and communities to work on collaboratively. And again, we hope this report can set conditions for that process to advance. At the end of the day, when I worked with chiefs and I had this conversation with Chief Jepson, when I asked chiefs, what's the ultimate objective of your department's work? Chief Jepson rightly identified as progressive chiefs to everywhere that the outcome is trust. Crime and violence are proxies for mistrust. In any human relationship, formal or informal, personal or impersonal, trust is safety and safety is trust. When people trust people and institutions, force, violence, antagonism abate. And when trust is low, violence can increase. So as we see at the key to success in Beaverton is to improve trust with the community. And we think there is no substitute for the grassroots effort of officers being in the community, especially the most marginalized neighborhoods, building trust, one contact, one conversation at a time. And again, I want to highlight the difference between that kind of sustained citywide holistic grassroots effort and more limited efforts to empanel bodies that can offer advice and counsel, but ultimately cannot substitute for the ground, for the grassroots efforts that we think need to be front and center. Next slide, please. As readers of the report will be familiar already, we've divided the report into a number of different categories, which are listed here. I'm not going to bother enumerating them. But I'm going to yield now to Denise to start walking you through some of the key recommendations and then we'll move on to questions here shortly. Thank you.
Next slide. All right. So we start off our report by going through the general department policy. Overall, the BBD could improve the policies by including more detail and guidance on supervisory responsibilities and accountability, as well as purpose and scope. This is one of the underlying recommendations you'll see throughout the report. The BBD should also leverage best practice and model policies that are already out there. There's no need to reinvent the wheel. The IACP model policies, they're out there and they're available for the department to recraft and to tailor to the department. Some specific examples, just briefly, Policy 341, Community Relations. For example, does not include guidance on the role and responsibilities of the department. Department coordinators reinforce that community policing is a responsibility of all officers within the department. And then there are a couple other policies where again, a little more detail around the purpose and scope, the roles and responsibilities of those involved would be helpful to include. And then I'll detail, I'll go through a little bit more on use of force policy, specifically in the next couple of slides. Next slide. So before I walk through some of these recommendations, I think it's important for us to kind of just re, or I guess define what use of force is. I'm going to read off the policy here at BPD. It's Policy 300. Force is the application of physical techniques or tactics, chemical agents or weapons to another person. One thing important to note is that use of force is, there's no national standard for use of force. It varies depending on agency to agency. So when we evaluated use of force here, we evaluated against what's written in policy. So that's how we defined it. A couple of recommendations specific to use of force and the policies. The big one here is affirming, affirming the sanctity of life. This recommendation has become a best practice in policing over the past decade or so. Doing this throughout the policy and in training, not only reaffirms to your officers the importance of sanctity of life to the department, something that they already do and understand, but it also affirms to the community the importance you place on this within the department. Greater detail and specificity of when force should be used and the need to revise the policy so that it's tailored again to the BPD and so that it aligns with best practices. So overall, as we have said before, the policy would benefit from providing greater detail on when force can and cannot be used. The, so we understand that the level of occurrence while low, as Jonathan mentioned, it is important to provide guidance within the policy. This helps kind of mitigate the risk to the department and aligns it again with best practices. We provide other areas where the detail can be added as part of the report. And this includes the importance of seeking voluntary compliance wherever it's safe and feasible to do so. We also note Graham, this should be cited explicitly within the policy and adopted by reference. So whatever the case, the national best practices and emerging best practices clearly point to implementing standards for the use of force that exceed what was established in Graham. This encourages the agency towards becoming a learning and proactive agency. In terms of internal accountability, when it comes to use of force, when we looked at the use of force review board, we do want to note that it is commendable that the city actually in the department has a use of force review board. This is, you know, very progressive. There are a couple of areas, again with the policy where it could be improved. That includes adding additional guidance on how members are selected, how long they serve on the board, timelines for when the evaluation should be conducted, the notification process, you know, how long members have to review the files and related material. And then leveraging other tools like body worn camera footage as part of those reviews. And then what, another thing, important thing to note here in our report, we note the importance of including your loopback mechanism. So measuring and ensuring that remedial training was conducted or that revisions to policy were made or additions to training were made. And we recommend that the police department examine the policies of other agencies to recraft this policy and related protocols. Next slide. When we looked at use of force data analysis and tracking, as Jonathan mentioned, data here overall was low. So our analysis on the actual use of force incident wasn't as descriptive as if we had done a similar analysis for a larger agency with significantly more use of force. But when we looked at policies, procedures and protocols related to data analysis, one of the recommendations we had here is to develop a critical event program. This allows the department to review near misses. So those are incidents where fourth could have been used, but weren't. This will also help the department better inform the policy and training. So if you're able to review the body or camera footage, reports from those incidents, you can identify instances where use of force was not used, but should have been or could have been. So, and use those examples into training, for examples of like de-escalation or proper supervision. We also found that BBD could improve its policy by de-conflicting the different types of reuse it already does. So they've got the training committee, the use of force review board, the comprehensive event review. Jonathan alluded to this earlier. There are all these mechanisms already in place. It's just a matter of kind of de-conflicting what each does and clearly defining that in the policies and procedures. Next slide. I think this goes back to you, Jonathan.
How many use? Seems a bit less idiosyncratic than mine. Oh, she turned on. She. How's that? I guess I'm the idiosyncratic one. Have you now? Still not. There we go. No? I think the, the, the speech gods are conspiring against me. I'm known to speak too much on occasions. Denise knows. A bit on the patrol operations side. Here's a chance for me to share with folks who may not have a policing background, some of the specific recommendations we made around the operations of the department. And I recognize some of these recommendations are tactical and technical. And without some context, may offend or confuse some folk sensibilities. One of the things we noticed about the department, which is commendable, is that officers here feel expected to be proactive, to go out and engage a community, to, to do the kinds of things from relationship building to enforcement activities that are likely to prevent and reduce crime rates. Toward that end, we think the department can do quite a bit to improve and modernize the use of data to inform patrol activities. Relative to the, the training and motivation of the officers and the quality of the leadership, we think that the data analytics process lags behind. We think that upgraded data analytics capability can help the department better inform the allocation of resources and can better help supervisors and line officers build projects that will optimize community engagement and support the reduction of crime. In a related vein, we'd like to see more line level effort and first level supervisor effort to, to do team planning around patrol activities. We think this will optimize the way that officers, officers in the field are using their time between calls for service. As Chief Jepson knows, as any police leader knows, the, the quality of the Beaverton Police Department or any police department is no better than the worst officer's last contact. Fortuitously here, you have some very motivated, idealistic officers. We think if anything, they should be empowered more to make grassroots and street level decisions around how best to use their resources and they need better, more real-time data to do that. We'd like to see more of an effort to leverage data from the police department's body worn camera program. It may not be obvious to the community, to the council, or even to the department, body worn camera footage is any department's largest source of data on its interactions with the community. Body worn camera video is a treasure trove of data and finding better ways to use that data to optimize performance, accountability, community transparency, we think is all to the good. As we pointed out, as Denise started to mention, while the department does use force about one out of every 592 times, it doesn't use force in the other 99.8%. It's very hard to reverse engineer from failure or to reverse engineer from a violent encounter. It's much easier to understand the recipe and ingredients of success. So we think it's well worth the department's understanding why almost all the time when officers confront people who could be violent or combative, they're not. Why officers are able to diffuse conflict proactively. Along related lines, we think that the department needs to improve equipment. I know there was a comment earlier about the recommendation to issue individual rifles. I'm not privy to the process by which a department would or wouldn't do that. But a bit of context here, the department has right now what are called pool rifles. It means individual officers share rifles. They can just take one from an equipment locker. The risk there is that a rifle should be cited for the individual person who uses it. To my knowledge, there's never been a shooting in Beaverton with a rifle. But the purpose of the rifles is to ensure that officers can handle a potentially lethal situation with a very, very accurate tool. And having rifles zeroed for an individual officer significantly mitigates risk to the public as well as to officers. And that's the, the genesis of that recommendation. We also recommend putting additional equipment in the cars, which can support de-escalation in the field. This, for example, includes better ballistic shields, tools that are less lethal, that can minimize the need for lethal force. And basically enhance officers' capacity to respond to incidents where force may be necessary. Next slide, please. Training and education. I want to highlight, Beaverton falls into that class of agencies which are, have the resources and relatively low crime rates to train a lot. The training program in Beaverton is exceptional, which is a credit to the department's training unit and also credit to the support the department's gotten historically from the council. We heard early on that there had been some reductions in training funding related to COVID and, and the, the reduction in funding. We believe, understand that funding has been restored, but I, I can't say loudly enough to continue the level of police services that this community has come to expect and to continue to raise the bar, training and education have to be front and center. Historically, many police departments, one of the first things to be cut is training and education. That's a recipe for disaster in medicine. It's a recipe for disaster in aviation, and it's a recipe for disaster in policing. The department has some good training resources. It needs more. It needs more physical space to train and it needs some updated equipment. One of the things the department does very well is what's called CONSIM, conflict simulation. This is basically role play training where officers have an opportunity to practice de-escalation skills, verbal skills, putting together use of force with verbal skills. We recommend doing more of this on a greater frequency. Again, that involves additional resources. We also want to recommend using more low fidelity decision-making exercises. And this is just, to put this in plain English, training doesn't have to be super realistic to be effective. The simple process of giving officers scenarios, situations, and asking them to walk through what they would do, those are very valuable exercises, which we know from research can improve decision-making in the field. We also recommend what's what are called micro learning sessions. You can think of these as, as quick workouts for decision-making skills, mental skills, cognitive skills related to functioning effectively in the field. The department also previously had a use of force simulator, which we understand has been mothballed due to the equipment being obsolete and due to a lack of space to use it. Now, these simulators can be an effective part of a training and education regimen. We also think that the department should do more to enhance the capacity of first-line supervisors to serve as instructors. Although there's a need for specialized instructors in any organization, including a police department, sergeants and other supervisors have an inherent relationship with the officers under their command, which allows them to serve as mentors and guides. And we think that should be formalized. We think there are strong opportunities, even on a daily basis, to, to teach, to learn, to function as a team. A lot of the things I've been saying for the past few minutes involve money, which we know is, is never in sufficient supply. To that end, we think the department should take some substantive steps to improve its capacity to write grants and apply for federal and other funding. We've had the opportunity already to have some conversations with Chief Jepson and the leadership team around some just released federal funding opportunities related to community engagement, community policing, de-escalation training. And we, we think there's some near-term opportunities for the department to seek some funding in those areas. Next slide, please. A little bit on internal trust building that I'm going to yield back to Denise. One of the things that we did not see in Beaverton, you know, and as we've said now a couple of times, we've worked with departments all over the country. And as a veteran police officer myself, I know the police culture can be run through with a deep streak of cynicism and negativity and bitterness, especially in fraught political times. We were completely surprised not to see any of that in Beaverton. The positive attitudes here expressed by the newest officers up through senior, senior leadership are a refreshing respite from much of what we see in other parts of the country. No police department is perfect, but I would be hard pressed to think of a group of officers and leaders I've met in the recent past who share the idealism, the commitment that officers and leaders do here. We think to preserve that level of, of motivation and morale, senior leaders need to continue to improve their efforts to engage the, the rank and file. And I'm going to kind of put Chief Jepson on the spot here. Actually, I heard her say something today and we were between meetings and she said, you know, I, I was supposed to meet with a group of the recruits in a room and I'm, I've got to go in there and tell them I'm sorry. Something as simple as that signals to me, a leader who knows what she's doing. It's rare for a chief to think, I'm going to have the presence of mind to go into a room with my newest folks and apologize. And those are the kinds of little things we pick up and notice. So we want to see senior leaders visible on the street, taking calls, working side by side, not to micromanage, but to shoulder the burden and, and the duty of community service side by side. We also saw a, a lot of frontline interest from the newest officers, from frontline supervisors, from, from even newly promoted sergeants. There's a lot of energy, a lot of ideas. We want to see senior leadership formalize channels for that energy to be put to good use in the service of, of community engagement and crime reduction. I'm going to yield back to Denise with the next slide.
Next slide. I think. There you go. Okay.
You can see why I got a P.
All right. So the last category in our report was external trust and community engagement. Again, one of the central parts to our report and our recommendations, a big part here was a recommendation for the department to develop a comprehensive community engagement strategy. So we found that a strategy or plan for how to engage the community is lacking. And note in our report that ideally the strategy would detail how the department seeks input from the community and its policy development, training development, and its approaches to various community outreach methods. So everything from your low-level engagement efforts, so coffee with the cop, shop with the cop, to the more intensive community engagement efforts, problem-solving projects, engaging the community. Engaging the community and stakeholders around things like burglaries or shoplifting. Those should also be outlined in this comprehensive strategy. We also heard from both officers and community members that there was a need for more substantive relationship building. So while folks noted that they appreciated the activities. Like the coffee with the cop or shop with the cop. They wanted to engage the police department more so on the development or feedback on policies and training. They wanted to see more community academies. They wanted the police athletic league to be revamped and reestablished. Is a way to engage the youth. And then then engaging in more non enforcement activities. So deliberative, positive interactions that are outside of. When a citizen calls nine one one or interacts with with a police officer in that circumstance. We also heard from folks the need for the greater focus on serving immigrant communities. I do want to note here that they there we have heard there are changes being made. In our conversations, even with folks in the community, there was a lot of positive feedback for. The organizational changes that the chief is making around community engagements. And I think this concludes our presentation.
And we're going to share this mic and quit while we're ahead, right? So. So counselors with that, we'll we'll yield back to you for questions. We're looking forward to a a robust dialogue, which. It's the heart of of democratic policing.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation. It's very thoughtful, inspiring and in depth. If the counselors have questions. Counselor Hartmeyer.
Thank you. Now I'm going to have, can you hear me? Okay.
Loud and clear, thank you.
Oh, it's contagious. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for everyone that participated in helping do this. I think. The depth, the breadth of the report like just shows that there was a lot of really good conversation that happened. So I want to thank you for that. I sent a ton of questions in advance, so thank you for those responses as well. I do have a couple of questions I just wanted to ask here. And thank you for putting this back up. Wasn't where my brain was right now. So I'm going to ask my questions and then I can get to that. So. Hold on. Now I don't remember what I wrote down here. Okay, we'll come back to it. So, okay, you mentioned that we do have an internal use of force review board that we have. And I was curious, do you investigate all use of force or is there kind of like a, you know, an element? That then engage like that causes you to use your use of force board?
I'll address that one, counselor. Currently, there's a threshold by which we investigate use of force, so. It has to rise to either a certain tool that was used or an injury to either officer or suspect. That's typically our threshold.
Okay, and is it is the review board made up of BPD employees?
It's an internal review board. Believe there's a use of force instructor, also a field training officer. There's a very, it's laid out in policy. It's very specific about who is. Participating in the board.
Okay. And then the report has so many recommendations that I'm curious, how are you approaching? Like prioritizing that, right? There's a lot of policy change recommendations especially. And I mean, I was overwhelmed, right? And it's it's also interesting, right? Because we have this report that says our use of force rates are low, which is wonderful. Chief, we had a chat early on when you started where we talked a lot about, you know, like, we want to make sure that these big incidents don't happen here. And I think what's. Encouraging to me to see in this report is that there is so much proactive work happening within our police department. That that's why our rates are low. And so then it's hard for me when I'm like, there's so many recommendations and also we're doing so well, right? So I'm curious. From your reflection on it and, you know, the internal work that's already started, how are you prioritizing some of those recommendations?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, by the way.
Good evening, chief.
There's fifty nine recommendations. We've already kind of started our work in the way of going through and and trying to digest that as a senior leadership team. Part of this was a little bit on pause in the sense that we were supposed to be here in front of you in January and it's now April. Immediately following tonight, my senior leadership team is going away for kind of an executive retreat to kind of dive into some of this work. But I can tell you, as you've seen in the fifty nine recommendations, a great number of them are related to policy. Some of those have. Budget implications, some of them have bargaining implication. The ones that don't, we've kind of already moved over to green because we've looked through those and agree with the recommendations that have been made by Polis. And those are of those fifty nine were already kind of nineteen in the green. I'd say the remaining thirty nine forty are in yellow. And that is, as I said, related to the kind of the deeper dive and deeper discussions around. Whether or not that's going to have bargaining impact from a labor standpoint. When we talk about use of force and and boards and review and things of that nature. It brings to the table the bargaining unit. So that so there's work to be done there. And I think the way we've prioritized is to figure out what can we focus on that we know we can get through to green right away. And some of these other things will then kind of collate into priority tiers. In in the way of budget constraints and things of that nature, and I hope that helps.
That does help. Yeah, thank you so much. This one is maybe for Polis and our leadership. It was curious to me, like, learning about the, you know, the pool rifle versus individualized rifle. And like, I totally understand. Like that it's safer for everyone if you have an individualized rifle. But if our incidents are so low, like, is assigning an individualized rifle like a necessary? Thing to do, right? Like if if our use of force incidences are so low. And if my logic is poor, please correct me.
Well, maybe I'll address it this way, you know, we. Our obligation is to train for events that could have could happen. We've seen all across this nation events of mass casualties, shootings involving rifles. By the perpetrator. Those are the kind of high box events that we train to respond to. And those are the kind of events that oftentimes we would need to be utilizing a tool such as a rifle. If I limit the number of rifles and I'm playing kind of a little bit of a guessing game as to who's deployed in the field that have the rifle. Then I'm stripping this community. Of the ability to have a fully robust response and ensuring that we have the tools at the table to neutralize that situation as effectively as we can. I hope that's what you were.
Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you. I didn't know if you had anything from your.
No, I think the chief answered that as well as we would have.
Okay. Okay, just a couple more for me. So the comment on the training funding being reduced and this may be restored. While as a council, this is maybe more of a comment. The council does approve the budget, but the budget is proposed to us. And so I think my ask. Back would be to make sure that training is prioritized in the budget that's presented to the council. DC Jules, we had a great conversation about training. We, I was smiling at you during that part because I was like, where's the Oculus? Let's go, you know? So I think I would just ask that of you is make sure that the budget that comes to council has training prioritized. Because I do think it's important to have that conversation and learn about just how important the scenarios are, those micro trainings or. Those full on, you know, kind of like simulations. It's so important. So please make sure that that does come to us.
You you have my commitment.
Thank you. And then the other one that I was a little like unsatisfied by in the report and I I don't know if I missed an attachment, so if I did, I'll keep looking, but. Around engagement. You know, in the Polish report, you you called it kind of like we need to get past like the hallmark type of engagement. And so thank you for adding a little bit more to like examples of things that I'd love to hear chief from you and. DC gave me a little bit during my one on one, but you know, what are what are some of your priorities in the engagement side of things? I know social media is going to be part of everyone's strategy, but we also know how toxic social media can be. For you, for your team, for us, right? And so I want to make sure that some of those. Opportunities for true human connection are there. And so I was curious, what are your priorities there?
Yeah, there's several and I'll touch on the hallmark thing first because. And I'll say this fairly bluntly, I I find programs or or systems like Coffee with the Cop to be. Not useful. Typically, the folks that show up to those events are people that already. Have a relationship with us and support us, and that's great. Don't get me wrong. But if we're trying to make true progress, we're trying to get into spaces with folks in our community that have less trust with us. And that. To me, that's a self serving kind of system, if you will. And along those lines, when you do touch on social media, I'm going to go down a different road. And Jonathan said this earlier in a meeting about the importance of telling your story. And. Familiarizing your community with who your police department is. And to me, that's very important. And so social media. Does play a role. Sometimes it can be a negative one, but I think if used in the right ways. It gives us an opportunity to kind of get behind the curtain, get behind the scenes of this police department and kind of showcase. The amazing talent that exists within this police department and the people that are out there serving this community. And I think it's it's. It's a tool that is underutilized by this police department right now. And so that's that's progress that we're trying to make. And have made since since I've been here, but we have work to do in that arena.
And counselor, if I may, just wanted to offer a little bit of context about what. What we mean by hallmark card policing, which is sort of for better or worse, it's my term. What I mean is this. In in any personal relationship. We all like getting hallmark cards, right? It's nice to get those cards and flowers and gifts. But. As I'm fortunate to be able to say from experience. A partner, a spouse, someone who is there for you, who listens, who is truly present. That's what the police department has to do. A lot of community policing efforts, well intentioned, though they may be, amount to a hallmark card. Which is not a substitute for a real relationship with deep, deep roots. And as the chief correctly said, historically, many. Community policing efforts are well intentioned. But they are not responsive to the needs and realities of many of our most marginalized community members. For example, while it may not be the case in Beaverton, there are communities in America where having coffee with a cop literally puts your life at risk. So even at some of the community fairs, there are people who. Are not able or willing for a host of reasons to engage with officers at the kinds of events that departments often put on. This is why we call for a kind of much deeper trust building, which is painstaking. But really pays dividends, especially among our most marginalized and dispossessed folks.
Thank you. Then I guess I'll just quickly comment and kind of answer a little bit of the questions. Just a huge thank you for the work that went into this. I know it can be really hard to have. A little bit of, you know, looking glass into how things are going. It's easy to be defensive. I appreciated the kind of like. Start of the report that's like, please come open because like I even get a little protective, right? Of like somebody looking under the covers, but. It is important for that transparency that we're committed to as a community. So I think, you know, I I hadn't noticed that it was kind of a small sample size, but. When I look into the audience, I see a lot of dedicated public servants here. And so my ask would be to involve them in this process and how. You want to show up as a PD and how how can councils support you in that? And we want to help build that trust because like you said, the trust leads to safety. And we are very fortunate to have a pretty safe community as it is, but we want it to stay that way. And so, you know, council is here to help with that. So yeah, I think I would just ask the people that, you know, showed up here tonight, I would I would say tap them to and and say, how can we? How do we partner together on on implementing this? Because that ownership and finding your champions within is is so great. So that that's my feedback on.
Yeah, this is the an all hands on deck proposition. This. You know, I think we have to set the parameters as a senior leadership team, but. That's the point is channeling all the talent and energy that exists in this police department and maximizing it to the fullest potential. That benefits our community. And and there's countless examples of that, but we also have to be willing to listen. And be willing to hear things that we don't like hearing about ourselves. And you've heard me say this before, like my goal as the chief is to showcase the people underneath these uniforms. And for people to see past those uniforms and for some communities, that's very difficult. And the only way we're ever going to get there. Is if we get to know each other and have those difficult conversations.
Thank you, Counselor Keeter.
Yeah, thank you. I've got a few questions too. Counselor Hartmeyer Prig mentioned prioritization and budget impact and planning. For some of the recommendations here, I think one of the tools that would help me, and this might be for the manager's office, it might be chief, you and your team. But just a a matrix of that green, yellow, red prioritization and how are we working through it? And then. The budget impact of pieces that might be held up so that we can just plan for that a little bit better. That would help me visualize it.
Yeah, I think you can count on the fact that in the next several months, that that's what we're going to be working towards. I'll be delivering a strategic plan along with an implementation. Plan to the city manager that will then at some point be shared, either in a work session back with you in the in the months ahead.
Okay.
But as as been that has been pointed out, this is an extensive amount of work and takes time. So we just ask for a little patience in that.
Yeah, totally. Don't expect it all to get done all at once. I want to ask about policy recommendation number four. It's the volunteer policy updates. We've got a really great team of cert volunteers, but I would love, Polis, if you all can give examples. Oh, am I a little? A little echoey? If you all can give examples, are there examples of really great volunteer policies in other communities that we should be considering here? Or any thoughts there?
So. In thinking about effective volunteer programs. We think they can be most successful when you look for for volunteers. Outside the normal audiences that that you might customarily think of. One of the abiding challenges of policing is that the police are often needed most where their trust at least. And. We think that volunteer opportunities that deliberately reach out to marginalized communities to historically dispossess people. And look for ways to involve people in department activities. Consistent with their everyday circumstances is is a very good starting point. And I really can't stress enough the need to really reach out directly to the community's most marginalized folks. And. Another point I would add, volunteer programs should be developed collaboratively, the department, the community, whatever their good intentions. Don't presume to know what a volunteer program ought to look like. Ask people based on their needs. Because very often, police departments and folks like all of you, you think you might know what community members really want, but you don't, right? And that's and that's not, your intentions are good, but meet people where they are and ask what what can we do to help improve conditions in your neighborhood? What can we do to help reduce the frequency of calls for service and? Craft opportunities around those collaboratively identified needs.
Okay, that's great. That's a little broader than our typical just cert programming. And so I think I love the grassroots aspect of that. Policy number twenty eight talked about bystanders and bystander involvement. But I wanted to get a little bit more detail there about some of the improvements that you all might recommend with the bystander policy or bystander interactions and how we leverage those. For building up trust.
Let me look at.
Yeah, that was a number twenty eight.
Let me, let me look at and refresh my memory so I give you the responsive answer.
Number twenty eight on page thirty five.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So for the record, revised policy three hundred point two point one. Duty to intercede and report to reflect evolving expectations on active bystander. So. What this refers to, counselors. There's. There's an increasing effort across the nation, which we find commendable to have programs where. If an officer witnesses a colleague using or about to use excessive force or otherwise do something illegal or unconstitutional. That officer will intercede, will actively step in. And prevent some and and I. You need to look no further than the tragedy of George Floyd to understand what I'm talking about. So we would like to see the department. Formalize and tighten its approach to active bystander and we we've included language from the ABLE program. Which has developed at Georgetown University and Georgetown Law School. And chief, I you, I think you may have some thoughts on that.
Yeah, this is actually on the heels of that. It was part of the police reform package legislatively. So we are mandated under ORS to. Create a standard and a duty to intercede that is well trained in our police department and already have been. So. That's all been bundled up.
Okay, great. When I was reading that, I was reading that as bystanders from the community. Okay, great. When I was reading that, I was reading that as bystanders from the community side of things and less so bystander from the police side of things.
No, and his reference with George Floyd, you saw multiple officers in that scenario for protracted periods of time while that event played out that had, had a duty to intervene and did not.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks. Uh, Denise, this question is for you. Uh, you mentioned a couple of roles that you have are, are as a police monitor for a couple of different communities. Can you touch on that? Or is that something that we should be aware of here in, in Beaverton? Or do we have a need for that sort of role? Looks like a sort of citizen uh, advisor or oversight role. Can you talk about that a little bit and what that actually is?
Yeah, so I think it, there are different kinds of oversight. Um, both that kind of like the, so my role with the City of Fort Worth was a deputy monitor. The city had established an oversight office over the police department. It was run through the city. Um, so it was independent, if you will, from the police department. Um, that's one type of oversight. There are others where it's, um, so we just monitored, we were auditors essentially. We had, we had access to all the files, all the data. We had access to IA Pro, the body worn camera footage, everything. Um, we could attend use of force review board meetings. The need there came out of a series of critical incidents. Um, and that's why there was a call from the community for that oversight. There is federal oversight, so that's what I'm doing with consent decrees in Chicago and Puerto Rico. And those are a pattern of practice. DOJ came in, did an investigation, found violations of civil rights. Um, those are much more expansive. They're overseen by a federal judge. I'm appointed by the court to monitor the police department's implementation. Those, as you know, and as you've heard, can extend decades and decades long. Um, Chicago has been in it for several years now, Puerto Rico over ten. Um, and they're not anywhere near fully implementing all the recommendations. Um, on the lower end of things, there are community boards. That's a type of oversight. The boards are sometimes, um, housed within the police department and sometimes they're housed as part of the city. Um, most of the time, they're not funded and most of the time, um, they're just community members. There are some boards where, um, the community members are fully trained. Um, they're fully trained on the, they attend a community academy, they go through all the policies and it's extensive process. And then there are other oversights like inspector generals where they'll actually investigate uses of force or administrative investigations for the police department. Um, there are, as a police monitor, there are cases where that is necessary, right? There are instances where the department needs the external independent oversight in order to get to a place where they can then do it themselves. Um, when we reviewed the police department from the use of force perspective, um, we didn't see a, a need. One, the uses, the number of uses of force are low, number of complaints are low. Um, as Jonathan has already explained, it, 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 there's no immediate need for oversight. That's not to say that, you know, ten years, the needs of the community are different, the needs of the department might be different. Um, but right now, the needs of the community and the needs of the department don't expressly, you know, point towards an independent oversight. Though we do stress in our report, the need for improved, increased community engagement. Um, and you'll see this across the nation with many police departments. Communities want to be involved. They want to have a voice. They want to have input in the policies that directly impact them. Um, and the trainings that directly impact them. Um, so there is a need. Um, and we heard that from both the police department and the community, the want to engage the community in a more substantive way. Um, I hope that helped answer your question.
Yeah, it did. Thank you. Um, I've got one final comment and it's about the grant writing. So this might be for a city management team. It could be Chief's team too. Um, the need for grant writing, potentially more grant coordination and grant reporting, um, grant administration is something I've heard from other departments as well, specifically the courts recently. Um, we've got people who know the programs and know the, the budget need really well, but might not have the either the expertise or the time to actually do the reporting after we receive funds or to really to invest all of the time that's needed to actually go after grants. And so, one of the things that I could see as being an opportunity in the future is a higher level grant coordinator role that supports the, the grant administration from several different departments so that it doesn't have to be so isolated. But if that person could support uh, police grants and courts grants and community development grants or whatever else there might be, I could see a need for that. Um, but it's just something that's kind of on, been on my mind for a little bit. That's all I've got. Thank you all.
Counselors, if not.
Thank you, Council President. Um, a, a couple of questions I had were asked already, so I won't ask them again. The ones that were left on my list is around mental health. And I said, it's mentioned a couple of times in the report, but there's not a, a deep focus on it. Um, we heard during public testimonies and, um, as we read in the report, about forty percent of all use of force is related to mental health. I have a few questions embedded in this, but the first one is, um, i- is that percentage trend consistent with what you're seeing in other communities that have similar demographics and economic realities as as Beaverton and in the metro area or beyond?
So the, the short, the one word answer, Counselor, is yes. Um, in, in any police department, you will find that mental health contacts often account for a disproportionate amount of use of force. And the reasons for that are, are fairly straightforward and, and are tragic. Um, folks living with mental disorders of various kinds often have a very difficult time with emotional regulation, with self-control. Um, they often require and don't always get medication. Um, in many cases, there are all kinds of coexisting conditions and comorbidities, addiction, homelessness, overall marginalization, poverty, lack of, of informal and formal support. Um, unfortunately, police departments are forced to encounter folks who often have no other resources. Um, I, you know, I, I know there's a lot of conversation nationally. We heard some comments here tonight about the need to continue to look for models of co-response of involving social workers and other folks in the response, uh, model. But I, I, I support efforts like that when they're properly crafted. At the same time, I, I want to be honest in saying that unfortunately, none of those programs substitute for a wider social conversation and substantive policy changes around what we do with folks living with chronic mental illness. And there are wider considerations here that are beyond the control of the police department or city council. Those are local and regional and national, but the reality is, no matter how many social workers or, uh, counselors you put on the street, there will always be those cases where people are violent, they're delusional, they're experiencing psychotic episodes. And, um, you're never going to remove force from all those encounters. Try though you may, and then as we all wish we could.
Yeah, and, and, and to your point, I think about that a lot. I feel like we are starting to see some, uh, breaks in the bottlenecks around a more unified response across jurisdictions from cities to counties to the metro region to the state and hopefully someday at the federal level as well. Um, and i- in Beaverton, we're working on a permanent shelter. We're working on an access center. Washington County is working on the critical, um, addiction triage and treatment center. Um, all of which are underway and not here yet. Um, in the meantime though, there was a recommendation around improving and modernizing data-driven directed, um, patrol activities. My read of that is just the information that's going into the system to allow for better analysis on the backend. I was just really curious if some of the percentage of the folks, um, that fall into that forty percent category, if there's repeat. Because I imagine that mental health, there, there's probably an inherent lack of trust latent within a lot of different types of mental health crises. Um, and running towards, uh, friction and, uh, uh, instances where use of force has been, have probably become imminent. Um, I'm guessing that you probably see some repeating interactions with individuals. And so, I'm wondering if that's data that can be captured just to get a better sense of, of the folks that fall within that forty percent.
Uh, so let me, let me offer some nation, national level comments, and then I'll, I'll, I'll yield to the department. But I, again, to sort of to, uh, I gave you an example of the chief, you know, apologizing to young officers, and I'll now pick on AC twelve's. You know, I were, we were driving today coming, uh, you know, coming from a meeting and he saw, um, a man walking down the street and recognizing my name. He said, oh, that's so-and-so, right? And A O A, a person in your community who lives with mental illness and, and, and is homeless. And so, in any community, even the largest cities, officers know who these folks are. And, uh, and so sometimes Counselor, you're right, there can be mistrust and friction, but the flip side of the coin is very often because officers know who these folks are, they often develop a lot of rapport and trust. Um, contact after contact and, um, fostering those relationships, giving officers the resources they need to help engage those folks can mitigate the need to use force in, in, when it's necessary to take people for an involuntary evaluation and so on. And Chief, uh, Deputy Chief, what thoughts you have?
Well, I mean, I think you're very astute in what you said about the systems issue and that Oregon's well on its way to try and recently legislatively to try to stand up some better resources. Um, that would help diminish our need to be in those spaces with folks that are suffering mental illness. Because like programs that have been mentioned cahoots, it's a, it's an alternative response model for folks that are in crisis but don't demonstrate necessarily some need for police interaction. And we have a, a different model here in Washington County, which is M H R T that partners a clinician with an officer and it's kind of a back and forth model that way. Um, but to Jonathan's point and to the illustration of, of the deputy chief today, um, our officers and especially our bike team, and I'll say that, they're out and they, they are very familiar with a lot of these folks and have developed strong rapport with a lot of these folks.
Well, I have two more things. Um, the, the last one is kind of piggybacking on top of that conversation on mental health is, um, I imagine that one of the reasons why our instances of use of force are so extraordinarily low is because of the mental health of our police officers as well. Um, and I, I've heard some pretty moving anecdotal stories about the internal support systems and, um, examples of leadership from top down of it's okay to express your emotions. It's okay to feel what you're feeling, um, instead of bottling it up and allowing that to fester and affect you negatively. Um, it, it seems like in the recommendations, there's probably something in here, maybe it's a continue to do, uh, I don't know if it has to be increased, but the, the, the internal support systems for officers seems to be almost as important as things like training.
Well, it's, it's all intertwined, in my opinion. And being in this industry for almost thirty years, I feel like I, I've lived a lot of it. And as I've said earlier today, I think the wellness program that we're starting and, and the focus on taking good care of our first responders who are exposed to a great deal of trauma on a daily basis. I mean, you carry that with you and you bottle it and it could be a recipe for misconduct. It can be a recipe for for choices in the field that lead to excessive force. And we see this all over and I, I, I think it's, it's a package. It's a bundle. We have to do a really good job of training, but we also have to do an equally good job of taking care of our people and making sure that they have the resources they need to be sound mind, sound heart, and able to go out and do this job as effectively as, as we demand them, as our community demands them to be.
Yeah, I imagine that standing up on the, some, some of the last slides around like the, um, the athletic league and things like that. It's, the, the community engagement is probably as beneficial to officers as it is to the community. Um, the last thing I'll say around advice on implementation, and it gets to something that Counselor Teeter was saying, is that our behavioral health court, just like our B SOVER court, we do, um, you provide funding as a city, but they also are heavily reliant on grants and other income sources. And it seems like there could be an opportunity to partner up with the behavioral health court. Um, resources around grant writing. I don't know what that looks like, if that's even allowed in budget. Um, but, uh, the, the need for grant writing also extends over there as well. And it would be great to see those resources being used kind of unilaterally across both.
Agreed.
Uh, Counselor, I just wanted to briefly highlight something you said, which is critically important to understand. Um, as, as elected leadership, as you work collaboratively with the city, with the police department to continue to move the department forward. Um, the, the mental health and well-being of the officers is critical and, um, very often there's a rush to attribute errors officers make to some kind of political or, or other animus. When the reality is that a lot of errors we see in policing, like errors in medicine or aviation or other high consequence fields, they're the result of people who are physically and emotionally exhausted. And, um, it, it's well to remember that, uh, ensuring the welfare of these folks is absolutely critical to the success of, of, of their work in the field. And this is true around the nation. Um, police suicide rates are stratospheric. My understanding fortunately is that Beaverton has not been touched by the epidemic of police suicide, but, um, all of the mental health crises that you see in the community live inside police departments, depression, trauma disorders, um, so that attention to the mental health and wellness of the men and women in, who wear badges is critical for everybody in the community. And a key part of reducing force.
Okay, thank you.
So Hassan?
For those of you who do not know, I was fasting today and at seven forty-one, at five minutes ago, I was just breaking my fast. I'm gonna take a quick sip of water, then I have a question. Thank you. All right, um, I have like a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. And I'll just start with like every, everything everyone's saying, I feel like has helped get us closer to feeling like we know where we're going. Um, on the police side, you talked about, you know, not recommending an oversight committee. When you, i- is that based on like, like, is that something that you say standard across all cities? Like what, what is the industry standard around how folks review their police, whether it's like their own independent programs or like, what are some other ways that you see? And then just, I guess if you could talk more about that.
All right, so there are no standards. Okay, there's, there are no standards. And there is limited research actually on the impact of oversight programs, um, of police. Um, the one thing or a couple of things I can say here is oversight of police has, is, has to be tailored to the department and to the community. What works in one city and for one agency is not going to work for every city and every agency. Um, so it has to be tailored and it has to be continually evaluated and updated, right? So, um, like for Long Beach, what we saw as something worked ten years ago, no longer worked anymore. So it had to be changed and updated. Um, and carrying that program from ten years ago did more damage than benefit for the city and the community. Um, the other thing to keep in mind too, when we talk about oversight, you're looking for oversight, is it's not a panacea. It's not going to solve all the problems. Um, it's not going to address all the issues. I think something that we've highlighted here so far is some of the issues that police officers face in the field um, are beyond their control. In most instances, mental health issues is one example. Um, so oversight programs don't necessarily, they're not going to, they're just a piece to the puzzle. They're not going to answer everything. Um, something important to keep in mind is, again, they're just one aspect of oversight. Um, and in my opinion, it's, this is my opinion. Um, oversight is, should and should not be intended to be a long-term uh, way to address an issue for police misconduct. The goal behind police oversight should be to get the agency to a point where they can internally hold themselves accountable. So what you'll see is in some cities where the agency is not able to do that because of systemic issues, leadership issues, supervision issues, that oversight is necessary. Um, and the goal should be to build up the department through its training, its policies, supervision, all of that, so that it, it can look inwards and address misconduct internally, so it never rises to a, a bigger issue.
So what I hear is in, in your experience, oversight is generally more maybe like a reaction to an issue, not something that is.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, okay. That makes sense. Okay. Um, okay. There was another question. It's coming. Give me a minute. I was very hungry today, in case you're wondering. Um, Can you help me understand or any of you, what is our process for the use of force? I knew you talked a little bit about it. There's an internal review board that reviews it. Is that the same or different for complaints? Complaints, like if someone filed a complaint?
I'll address that, Counselor.
Thank you.
It's a different process. It it travels two different routes in effect. A complaint may come in that may have nothing to do with use of force. Your your officer was rude to me. So we would send that through our professional standard system. An investigation would be conducted either by our supervisor or lieutenant or above. And it would go through a findings process. And after a finding is made, then we would issue some sort of discipline potentially. Maybe it's unfounded, maybe it's exonerated, the officer didn't do. We had body worn camera and the officer didn't do what the community member said they did. So that's one process. The use of force process, we're not alleging any sort of necessarily, we're not alleging any sort of misconduct on the officer's part. We're just reviewing it for was policy followed? Did did training, was training needed to be updated? Or did they follow their training and what they were doing? They're not mutually exclusive. You can have a complaint that involves use of force. Your officer was heavy handed, they, you know, punched me when I didn't need to be punched, something like that. So it would travel both routes. But more often than not, there's a complaint that doesn't involve use of force or there is a use of force incident that doesn't involve a complaint. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. I didn't really have a lot of questions. I'll just make some comments. I this is like the most thorough. I mean, it was a lot of pages, so thank you and thank you for the time that you took. So there weren't questions from the report. I do want to just take a moment and recognize some of our community folks who have shared testimony. I know that for folks on H track, twenty twenty one was when I started. And so I was a big part of conversations and discussions. And so recognize our community folks, but also our police officers. Like, we see how hard you've been working, like, it's very clear from this report and from what we hear from our community, like how much you are doing to keep our folks safe. And so I just, I want to recognize that because I think it's painted like two groups and I think that we are more unified than we realize. I do want to explore, not today, but in the future, like, what does, I don't want to say the word oversight. Like, what does a process look like for and and maybe just our council to feel more informed around like what's happening? And I do think when I heard you chief talking about a strategic report, I imagined like, oh, what what does that look like? And how can the council weigh in and support that? So just something to maybe think about. I want to echo what some other folks said, you know, it is a budget year, making sure that we're prioritizing any and all training. I think that's super, super important for us. I love that. I want to figure out how we explore mental health. That is maybe not the job of our police officers, but what can we do? Which just led me to a question I had. Is there a way to to build a a system where if you have this repeat, that it's like known that the address is known or the person is known to have mental health issues? And can you tell me about that?
Yeah, so typically a call for service comes into Washington County Consolidated Communications. So our nine one one center, it's a countywide center, obviously. The call comes in and it's address based, so, you know, four two nine five Southwest Allen. That call comes into that address and we know that Joe Smith, who lives there, has struggled with mental health issues in the past. The calls for service may be the same type. He he calls in and says, hey, there are people knocking at my door. We send officers out. We know that there aren't people knocking at his door. We contact him, we talk to him. And so that will come up in what's called premise history. So we, any type of call comes in at Joe's address, we can look at that premise history and go, oh, it's Joe. He's calling, he's struggling tonight. We'll we'll either make make a phone call or we'll go address it in a different way.
So if a person wanted to say, I have this premise, it's not a premise history, right? But I have someone with this mental health challenge or with this mental health issue, is there a way to like, like, not not reactive come to you, but proactive come to you?
You know, I don't know that there is, but we have a flagging system through our CAD system and that actually might not be a bad idea to open opportunities for folks and families that have. You know, I'll just share, like, I have my youngest boy is autistic and, you know, I worry too. Like, if he's having one of those moments and he has them frequently, that he's not emotionally regulated and someone calls the police to come to my house because they hear yelling. It's like, would it be helpful for those officers responding to know that I've I've by my own accord as the parent flagged that resonance for their knowledge? Walking in to to the situation with more information always helps our officers respond more effectively.
I would, I mean, I don't know what that looks like and I don't know if there's probably Jenny's like that costs money, but.
Well, that that actually would be through the county. It would be through Waka.
Well, so I I bring that up because, you know, as a, I guess, like, just a lot of the communities that come to me, to get them to call you is hard, right? And I and most of their concerns are not related to an active issue, right? It's proactive. And so if there was a system to say at this address, we know that there is a a child with with autism that that needs support so that the response could be different. So I would just love to, you know, whether that's a county state process. And I'm just going to throw in like a personal, like, you know, I have an elderly father who you know, is struggling with memory and dementia and I just think of the wrong person calling and what that means. And so if there's a proactive way to say, hey, there's this person or like a bracelet or, you know, like that he could wear, which we're also looking into. The last thing I'll say, and it's based on something Counselor Hartmirebrig shared, was around community engagement. And as you're building that strategy, I do think that this council has like the connections and and ability to want to be a big part of what that looks like and inform you and help support that. So whatever that looks like in the future, and I just so much kudos and thanks on this report and all the folks that have been involved. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Dogger.
Thanks, everybody. First, thanks for the presentation and engagement. I apologize if I'm not the short by two and fasting, but mostly because I'm back end of a couple of days of norovirus. And I do not recommend it. High level question for the Paul's folks. I know you call out that the overall, essentially the low incidence of the use of force is a combination of good policy, low crime, good people, like. I need a little bit more help with that because we can craft good policy, we can partially influence good people through things like vetting and hiring. But it seems like the biggest way to ensure use of force impact and low crime is good policy. So I'm going to echo, I guess, what a couple of other counselors saying as far as like impact of these things, particularly on policy, like creating the framework for ensuring this, like, I just need to know like the prioritization of that. And with fifty nine recommendations and the chief says, I've seen that they're already in motion and law and not. I just don't know if the ones that are most impactful are are happening right now. Like fifty nine of them, I think Counselor Hartmirebrig said it's overwhelming. I just kind of want to, I don't know, you don't have the answer right now, but if you have five of them or ten of them, right? Like that that we need to do immediately, that would be really helpful to know. I don't know if you guys want to address that right now. Wait a little bit later.
Yeah, Counselor, we we struggled to to understand you a little bit. I think, I'm gonna try to paraphrase, that kind of what would be your top ten that we could address immediately or need to be addressed immediately? Was that was that accurate for the question?
Well, it doesn't have to be ten. I was just saying like, like the prioritization, right? We don't know, there there are fifty nine recommendations, right? Like, some of them seem relatively minor, some of them seem really complicated and might take multiple years, right? Like, but what I need to know is like, what is the most impactful, right? Because we know that it was called out in the report that that we have low crime, we have or a low incidence of force and they thought it was because of low crime, right? And or the demographics or good officers, good policy, that sort of thing. It's, I guess, like, like, what are the what are the most impactful changes that we need to make right away? It doesn't have to be ten and you don't have to have those right now, but like, that that's kind of the question that's on my mind.
Yeah, I think I'm just going to echo a little bit what I said earlier about how we need to do a dive into this and come up with those recommendations.
Okay, yeah, that's fair.
And those will, you know, those will be presented to Jenny that and then we'll schedule something to get back in front of you in the next few months.
Okay. One consistent theme called out is mistrust or is like on the problem side. There are a number of ways that were called out to combat this transparency, openness, communication. Recommendation eight was talking about sharing data. So this question is related to that. What are the legalities and operational realities of sharing data in a timely manner regarding specific use of force? Right? So if an incident happens, do we have to wait until the investigation is completely done before we can share it? Or or, you know, can we talk about it in a bidirectional way with community right away? Like, what are the what are the realities of that?
I guess I'll address that one, Counselor. You were specific to number eight, is that right? The recommendation number eight, is that the one?
Yeah, just, yeah, because they called out sharing data. There were, that's kind of weaved in a few of them, but that was the main point of that one.
And that one is is very specific to bias based policing data, which is generated by the state. So it it has kind of several layers to it, not just B P D provides the information or citizens can actually provide the information independently of the police department and then the state might report that back to us. So there there's, we try to stay abreast of that data and and be on timely about it. But it's, there's several layers to it.
Okay. I know you don't, and this is maybe for Paulus on this one, I know you don't recommend an oversight body. Several members of the community have asked for a community advisory panel, right? And I saw some of the recommendations, actually quite a few of them in the of the fifty nine recommended or of the fifty nine recommendations involved, community input and engagement. Is a community advisory panel, you know, not an oversight panel, but a community advisory panel, a good way to accomplish some of that engagement work? Or is that operationally what we should be thinking about?
And so I think their intention behind the recommendation is yes, that the advisory panel board should be the mechanism or one of the mechanisms really for the community, provide that input on policy, training, or even just serve as a sounding board for upcoming activities or these reports on use of force or any of this data that's important to the community. Just another way for an avenue for the department to share that information with them.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, can I touch on that real quick? Because I think I don't know that I've said this yet, but I am actively researching what it would look like to stand up a community advisory board. There's a lot of different models out there. I want to make sure that whatever that looks like, it is the best fit for this community. And that would involve members of H track and DAB and B C C I and and those folks with their input so that we get this right and so that we we have that collaboration on the front end and then we'll make that recommendation to council.
Thank you, Chief. I really appreciate that. I think most of my other questions have been answered. I do want to close with a couple of comments. I know Counselor Tivnan mentioned this, but I want to acknowledge first and foremost how hard policing is. So it's really easy for me to sit up here and and pontificate or think about things when I'm not involved in these situations. So especially when you need to be on your game 100% of the time or people can be harmed. I'm a really big proponent of creating a culture of safety, not only for our community, for but for our officers as well. Those two things cannot be divorced. So I'm happy to hear about the mental health wellness program. I think that's that's the kind of stuff we need to, we need to continue to invest in. And I look forward to learning a little bit more about it and engaging with that. I really like that. And then for Chief Jepson and B P D, I think bidirectional communication and transparency, this was called out in the report, are are the key for community trust. They're the they're the vaccine for us to prevent problems, too. It would be nice if B P D could consistently and proactively share about, you know, how our officers are different, right? We have, we have vetting. Can we share what makes our officers different to the community, right? Not just folks like that sit up on this dais. I'd love to see us proactively publish all the training and the the resources that we provide for our officers so that they can make these decisions. Love to see us continue to talk about our different outcomes. How are we continuing to get the outcomes that we're getting? And what are we doing to ensure they continue? And and talk about our different engagement, right? How are we prioritizing community engagement? How are we being proactive? I love what Counselor Hassan just mentioned about the proactiveness around various avenues for for different communities in need and and how we're engaging and building relationships, particularly with marginalized communities, right? Different officers, different outcomes and different engagements, just and we need to, can't just be a one time checkbox thing. These things, you know, need to be talked about a lot and openly and it needs to be bidirectional. I've had a fantastic experience getting to know many of the officers. But that's an incredible privilege of being on the city council and I just wish the same for most of our community members because often their interaction is when something is going wrong, whether they're in an incident themselves or someone they care about. And I think that as much as we can do to share proactively and bidirectionally and communicate, I think, I think that's will will never be at a hundred percent preventing this sort of stuff. But I think that can at least change the narrative and to your point, Chief, earlier, you know, let you guys tell your stories. So thank you for all of this. I appreciate it.
Counselor, I just wanted to amplify something you just said, something I've said a couple of times to the chief and some of the command staff, but I want to say it openly here to all the community folks and to the counselors. Every department can improve. There will always be things that can be better. The pursuit of excellence has to be unrelenting, especially when lives are at stake. But I want to throw a challenge here on the table for this community and this department. You exemplify a lot of what needs to happen in policing this country. I think this department is well positioned to take on a leadership role, not just regionally, but nationally. You know, we work with scores and scores of departments and some of them are broken. It will take decades to fix them. Whatever the room for improvement here, you do a lot of things amazingly well. So much so that I think you you can be an incubator for good policing practices. And this gets back, Counselor, to your question about about grants and you you can create a self fulfilling prophecy, right? By telling your story and getting more resources, you can do what you do better and bring money and researchers here to study it and reinforce it and propagate it. But this community and department are in a really, really strong position. I'm not minimizing the suffering of folks in the community. I'm not minimizing the need for change and improvement and accountability. But you are in a great spot and I would run with it.
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to reserve my comments for later days. Thank you everyone for coming in. It's a, it's great to hear you're exemplifying our P P D and all the folks who's making it better. And thank you so much for coming. We'll have a few minute break until eight fifteen. And we'll resume with the second work session. Thank you so much. And um we'll resume with the second work session. Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll test the microphone to start. Um good evening, counselors. My name's Alyssa Maxwell. I'm I'm capital planning project manager with the city. And as I mentioned, Becky Hewitt's here with me from ECO Northwest. And we also have staff here to help answer questions, including Anna Latinsky, our planning division manager. Brian Martin, our long range planning manager, and Javier Mena, our affordable housing manager. And we're here to talk with you today about the Cooper Mountain Community Plan, specifically the strategies for the infrastructure funding plan. We included discussion questions in your packet, and at the end of the presentation, we'd like to um talk with you specifically about. Um the recommendations for the area of non-potable water service in Cooper Mountain, um the staff recommendations for transportation funding. And also any other questions that you might have or that you would like staff to explore further as we um move through the next phases of this plan. So we are you're all familiar Cooper Mountain um is an area in South Coast Beaverton. We're doing the community plan that will set the goals and policies for future growth. We anticipate the area could provide about five thousand new housing units. Um the infrastructure funding plan looks at um. Roads, parks, trails, and public utilities. So that includes water, sewer, stormwater, and non-potable water. When we adopt the amendments for the community plan, we have a legal obligation to put forth a funding plan. The funding plan should identify feasible, responsible funding strategies that help turn the community plan vision into a reality. The funding plan itself is not a regulatory document. Um it's a strategy document. No, excuse me, a strategy document. And it shows what approaches could be used in this area. Um so we're. Think of it as it is a plan, but is not the only plan for how infrastructure could be funded. And if there are recommendations from the funding plan, such as new fees or specific project lists. Those actions would have to be voted by voted on by council down the road. So we're not adopting the plan itself as a regulatory document, but it is providing a guide. For how we might implement infrastructure in the future. So the funding plan includes strategies to extend public infrastructure to and through the new neighborhoods for Cooper Mountain. There's a few guiding principles that we've put together um in developing the plan. So one is how do we facilitate development without putting any new strain on city funds? Um we're looking at ways for development to pay for the infrastructure that's needed for growth when it is feasible and reasonable to ask them to do so. And we're looking for consistency with other growth areas. Um we don't want to create a large discrepancy in the cost to develop in Beaverton compared to our neighbors. It's important to note that this plan is looking only at the one specific planning area. Um the city is currently studying water, sewer, stormwater, transportation revenue sources on a citywide scale. Um and those studies look at both capital projects and maintenance costs of our infrastructure. So depending on the timing of those studies, um any new rates or recommendations or changes from them could also apply at Cooper Mountain. So first, we talk about um the infrastructure overview. We're gonna look at what's required for Cooper Mountain. So this area, you're looking at a map of the um community concept plan. Um and it is a greenfield development. So there's no major roads or utilities that extend through the area at this time. Um infrastructure, there's also many natural constraints. So we have steep topography. We have ravines. We have many creeks which present challenges in implementing the infrastructure. So infrastructure planning is important, and there are three major projects that really impact the development timing. Let's see if we can point to some things here. So first, in the um southwest corner of the development, Clean Water Services is going to be building a sanitary sewer pump station. That would allow development to start making its way up the hill um and would unlock development in the lower half of the Cooper Mountain planning area. Um but at that point, once development reaches this area, we are going to need to build a crossing of McKernan Creek. That crossing would be a bridge that would carry the transportation corridor, and it would also bring water and sewer utilities up the hill. Um in addition, while those to the sanitary sewer pump station and the crossing would unlock development. For the uphill area, that area also needs a water pump station to provide water pressure at the top of Cooper Mountain. So this funding plan evaluates whether our current rates and policies will generate the revenue to fund these and other projects. Before they're needed. So the timing is important, not just the amount of funds, but when we actually get that money in respect to with respect to development. So the funding plan covers quite a few areas. We're gonna try to walk through them each fairly quickly. Um we're gonna start with public utilities. So when we look at strategies to extend public infrastructure to new neighborhoods and through new neighborhoods to reach those future areas. So this is how that um development typically works when we have a like a large number of different developments all going either simultaneously or after each other. So if you imagine that we have an existing utility line, it might be water or sewer um in a main roadway. When neighborhood A, this first neighborhood wants to develop, they need to get that utility extended to all the lots in the neighborhood. Um and then their neighboring neighborhood B comes in, they also need to extend that utility to all the lots in their neighborhood. Um for this to work, though, we often need to have central lines that run through neighborhoods. So those would be those thicker, darker lines in this map. And those utility planning will show us where we need those central lines to be larger than a local line in order to provide service to a wider neighborhood. Those uh central lines, when they are larger than a local line, we consider that part of the shared cost. Um because we want that cost to be shared to that wider area that those lines are serving. That would mean that system might still get to get built by neighborhood A. But that development might be able to receive SDC credits for the cost of building that larger line. We also look at shared costs um to fund regional systems like pump stations. Uh storage facilities and large-scale treatment facilities to serve a wider area. And in general, these regional and subregional projects get funded through both system development charges and capital funding, other capital funding mechanisms. So that's generally how infrastructure or utilities work, and I want to take a quick look at the analysis and funding plan for each of the public utilities. We analyze our current tools and current rate structures, and we're looking to see whether the SDC revenue that would be generated in each in this growth area. Is sufficient to cover those shared costs. So first for drinking water. Um the shared costs for drinking water include that pump station that needs to go in at the uphill for the uphill neighborhoods. Everything in blue. Um needs that pump station in place before it could develop. We also may have shared costs for water lines that connect through the development area um to. Connect to like the Willamette Water Supply and our other um larger systems. Um so when we look at our, these tables show us, um. The cost of those shared costs is just under twenty million. And if we look at the potential SDC revenue, again, based on current rates for this planning area, it's about double that. Um and that is good news, um because we do need that revenue for other regional projects like our reservoirs, other pump stations. Um other capacity-related projects. The other great news that we have um for drinking water is that we are expecting to see a direct appropriation from the legislature for. The um this Kemmer Booster Pump Station, so that new news um and is not yet reflected in these numbers. So. That's a change we're gonna be happy to make to the plan. When we look at non-potable water, so one of the key recommendations from the utility plan. Is the recommendation that we limit the area of our non-potable water service to lower elevation neighborhoods. So the areas in purple are the areas where the Purple Pipe System, purple for purple. Purple Pipe System from South Cooper Mountain can be extended without having to install a separate set of pump stations or other sources of water for. The non-potable service area. So the utility plan is recommending that these lower elevation neighborhoods would be the um. Unlimited area of new non-potable water expansion. And like drinking water, we're not asking council to consider a new funding strategy for Purple Pipe at with this funding plan. But as I mentioned earlier, that citywide study may come back with citywide or larger recommendations that could apply here. For sewer, I mentioned that Clean Water Services will be building this very important sewer pump station in the southwest corner. When you look at our SDC revenue or the SDC revenue for sewer, you'll see that split between the city and Clean Water Services. Clean Water Services. Uh receives ninety-six percent of the sewer SDC revenue. Um so that will go to fund things like. That pump station and other regional projects. As a city, we only currently collect four percent of sewer SDCs. Um so. At this time, our sanitary sewer obligation looks to be fairly small for Cooper Mountain. Um however, so we're not asking council to consider a new funding strategy for sewer just for Cooper. Um we do know that there are large capital project needs for sewer across the city and outside of this planning area. And so again, that citywide SDC SDC study um has the potential to recommend. A citywide or a different sewer SDC for that larger capital planning. So we just want to keep that on your radar. And then for stormwater, um in general, individual developments will build stormwater management facilities. And we don't have a public funding obligation as it comes to those neighborhood-scale facilities. We are projecting um about five million dollars worth of SDC revenue. For stormwater conveyance, and that could go to enhancements along the McKernan Creek Corridor. Or to other priority projects as identified through the city's capital plan. So we're not asking the city can not not asking council to consider a new stormwater funding strategy for this area at this time. So overall, on the public utility side, um the general recommendations are that. For now, we rely on existing SDC and credit policies and development developer contributions. To extend public utilities to the new neighborhoods. That's good news. Um the funding plan at this point recommends that we look at outside funding sources when we can use them to expedite. Um projects that would be needed for housing production, so to speed up that phasing of development, and we're seeing that already paying off in the work to get funding for the. Booster pump station. And then the funding plan also recommends looking at variable rate structures um for different housing types. And we're gonna we're should be able to do that through the citywide SDC study, looking at opportunities to um. Consider how charges affect different housing types. The funding plan also looks at parks and trails, um which THPRD is our major partner for parks and trails, and we've been working with them to identify. Both the location and the sizes for the parks. So these numbers are based on their current rates and policies. Um so the short and quick answer is that we do see that their projected SDC revenue. Um is less than the cost to build this level of parks that are proposed for the community plan. Um. While that doesn't look good in this table, um it makes sense on a regional scale because the gap in here is about the cost for this. Large community park um in the southwest corner that is supposed to be a regional facility with ball fields. Um and other like larger regional amenities, and so it makes sense that the larger community. Would be what contributes to the funding of that park, not just asking Cooper Mountain property owners to pay for that regional community facility. So. It's not out of line for um what we're anticipating to happen out here. So, okay, those are the easier things. Um now we want to turn to transportation funding, and this is where we are going to need to be looking at some new funding tools. So when it comes to transportation funding, we actually have a similar framework to the public utilities funding. So development generally builds local roads, local streets, smaller roads. And shared costs come in for larger facilities. So that includes the arterials that are shown in orange, and then this large um network, new collector network that's shown in green. So the shared costs come in in paying for portions of those larger roads, um because they are. Larger than a local street and serve a wider region. Those are, these are also the roads that we're planning, the majority of the bike lanes and substantial pedestrian facilities, right? So again, those are somewhat more of a shared, shared amenity. The current tool that we have for public, for that public funding portion is the transportation development fee or TDT, which those rates are set by Washington County. With those current tools, we have a couple of challenges. So first, if we try to cover the cost of all the shared costs through just that TDT revenue generation, we come up quite short. Our projected TDT revenue for this area at full buildout is about $43 million. And the public portion of shared projects is about 65 million. So that's not good math. So the second area, the second thing that's a problem is that our challenge is that the collector roads that we're looking at here are going to be quite substantial facilities. They need the roads, the bike lanes, the pedestrian corridors. And the area is hilly, so they're going to have retaining walls and be expensive to build. So the funding plan is looking for ways that the cost of those major roadways can be shared across the planning area instead of making it the obligation of an individual development that happens to have one of those major roads going across their individual property. And finally, the big challenge is timing. As we mentioned earlier, this crossing of McKernan Creek is critical to unlock development for the northern half of the planning area. And so we need a funding strategy that accumulates enough revenue early in the development process so that when development gets to that crossing, we have the funds to build it and unlock that uphill development. So the funding plan includes a number of different transportation funding scenarios. For tonight, we were just going to go over the recommended staff recommendation, which is in your packet as scenario B. This funding approach would establish a new Cooper Mountain funding source, likely a supplemental transportation SDC, which is charged on each new lot during development. That's similar to the approach that we're using in South Cooper Mountain. It's similar to the approach that most of the other urban growth areas around the county are using is having some sort of supplemental transportation charge. The way we're proposing it in scenario B, that new source would fund that McKernan Creek crossing. It would fund widening on 175th and it would cover a portion of the cost of all of those collector roads. This table shows how the recommended strategy splits the cost between development contribution, TDT, that new funding source, about $35 million in preliminary math, and as well as contributions from the county for offsite projects or long-term projects. This proposed approach addresses all of the challenges that we've just discussed. So first, it would fund about half, we'd, we would fund about half of our public obligation with the supplemental transportation SDC. And then the cost that we need to cover through TDT dropped down to about 30 million instead of that 65. So that is less than the revenue of 43, that's good. And in the long term, any funding beyond that 30 million need could be used for transportation capacity projects in other parts of the city. Secondly, when developers build the collector roads, this strategy would give them an opportunity for both TDT credits and transportation SDC credits to possibly offset a portion of the cost of building those collector roads. And then finally, the timing works out with this scenario. We would be collecting this supplemental transportation SDC from all the early developments and it would continue going so that we would have money to fund the crossing of McKernan Creek when development gets there. So the, then the big picture, big question, how much does it cost? The good news with this approach is that the preliminary estimates are showing that this Cooper specific transportation SDC would be similar to the rate that we are charging right now in South Cooper Mountain. And that's similar to the rate that developments are paying in other growth areas. We've started talking about this concept with a number of developers in some individual meetings. And nobody has been particularly surprised or raised great concern with this strategy. They're fairly used to this level of cost of developing around Washington County. If council is supportive of this recommendation, then we wouldn't need to do the work to document the methodology and propose a specific charge for that supplemental SDC. And it is important that we'd have that work completed before development takes off in this area. So overall, the funding plan is showing that we have the tools that we need that will allow infrastructure to be, to be provided at a cost that is in line with other developing areas. And we are recommending a supplemental transportation funding source that's similar to other developing areas. We also want to keep the storm and sewer SDCs on the radar because those citywide studies might recommend changes to the larger body to support larger body of projects. I know that I've just tossed a bunch of information at you and it's late, so I am going to stop there and see what questions we can answer. As a reminder, we are looking to get input on there are recommendations for non potable water as well as that supplemental transportation funding source. And any other questions you have or areas that you would like us to explore further as we build out the plan.
Or the presentation, any questions, councilors? Oh, Ashley?
Yes, thank you, thank you so much. Okay, so let me start with your questions to us really quick. Yes, I support the recommendation to limit the extension of the non potable water to the lower elevation. I'm going to come back to number two and then additional comments on the public. Okay, so for the supplemental transportation funding source, I think it sounds pretty critical and important. I'm curious though, since that would become like its own methodology, if we can exclude affordable housing developments from the supplemental system development charge.
Yeah, that's something that we would have to look at within the methodology and probably present council with some options of what that rate would look like. Because of course, if we were to exempt, like exempt regulated affordable housing from paying that, then that transfers the cost to the other properties. And so that's something that we could evaluate as we develop that methodology.
Okay, yeah, I think like just thinking about the holistic goals, like we put a, you know, about a, I think it was at a 10% goal of, of regulated affordable housing. And so to get those developments there, we also have to make it affordable to get them there. So overall, I mean, I know that in the past we have waived SDCs generally, but we do have to backfill that cost. So that means finding the money somewhere else. But if your methodology excludes them from it, you don't have to backfill it.
Right.
So if we're creating a supplemental system development charge for this, like I would ask that we look at the impacts of removing affordable housing from the transportation specific SDC. So I, yeah, I think that we definitely have to consider it to make this work. I'd be really curious. And I'm trying to pull my, like wrap my brain around just like how big this project is, right? And like it has to go in phases up the mountain to be possible. So I may have more thoughts as it, as we kind of, as I start to understand that. Cause I, I just didn't think about that, right? That like all of this is brand new and like, so it's not just like a new pipe, but it's that critical infrastructure. And we did get the update at our last meeting, I think about short session and the funding, which is so excited, exciting to know that like that's funding that's just directly coming to help us with these goals. So yeah, I mean, it's critical. I think that answers it. And that was really my main question.
Great, thank you.
Also, Teeter?
Yeah, thanks. Counselor Hartmar Prig touched on one of my comments too, and that was going to be talking about a, either a tiered rate for the supplemental TDT with an exclusion for affordable housing. So that we can incentivize the types of development that need more support or that we want to make sure we get more of. Other potential types of development that would be a high priority for me would be like middle housing or apartments, where it sounds like commercial uses might have, might take more time to come in because there would be fewer residents to start out. So if lowering a supplemental TDT helps get them in sooner, I'd be open to that. I think there's just a lot of information left out there that I, I still need to learn to know where I would stand in the end of all of this, but this is kind of where my head is at right now. It looks like the, the new Cooper Mountain funding source is about 35 million. Did you say that's about four or five million over what's actually needed right now or about on par?
It is, it, that's what, that's the cost that we would need to cover the proposed list of projects with it. So there, to do the rate and methodology, we would not be looking at trying to create a surplus within that SDC because if it's limited to this area, then we do need those numbers to balance at the end as best we can.
Okay.
That may mean that in the long term, if everything does develop and everybody pays their rate eventually, which could be 20 years from now, we may have revenue in TDT. But again, that, that doesn't also have to be used at Cooper Mountain. Any excess revenue on the TDT side won't be excess because we have a large number of city projects that would greatly benefit from that type of funding.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, there are a lot of projects I would love for us to be doing.
Right, exactly.
Next question is focused on THPRD. You, you did just explain the $20 million shortfall that shows in the slide and that makes sense. There have been conversations about a potential expansion of the Cooper Mountain Nature Park. And I don't know where funding for that would be coming from or what THPRD's most recent thoughts are. But has there been any sort of conversation that you all have heard around the nature park expansion, funding with that or anything there that could help us out a little bit here?
Yeah, I think the biggest potential source of funding for that expansion is really the Metro Parks and Nature Bond, where they have identified Cooper Mountain expansion as a priority for, and they have the largest pot of money related to expansion. So this funding plan is not identifying any additional city contribution toward that particular project. Because it does sound like there are sources out there that are already hoping to make that happen.
Okay, and if that happens, I assume that would reduce the amount of CD or not CDC, SDC funds that we would get from potential development that would be not happening.
It could, it really would depend on the extent that that, the extent of property that Metro were to purchase. It's likely that they would be looking to purchase property that is not highly developable, just from a cost standpoint and where the natural resources are. So, but we can't say until we, we won't know for sure.
Okay, that makes sense. And then I'll just answer your questions here on the slide. Yes, I'm okay with limiting the expansion, the non potable water assist, water systems to the lower elevations. I am interested in the supplemental transportation funding source. And I think that's it, but this is good work. Thanks.
Council Dugger?
Thanks. I have a couple of questions before I can answer your question. And I know this is a bit complicated because of multiple government agencies and things like that. But does it make sense for us to bond a portion of these costs to lock in instead of doing them incrementally just because of cost inflation? Is there a way to do that?
I'm not 100% sure I thought the question.
Oh, whether we should be bonding to fund the projects. I think at this point, the the bulk of the project work that is proposed in this plan would come as development is taking place. So we do have a few individual projects that would be city led. We are trying to limit the number of projects that would be led by the city from a capacity and a funding standpoint. So when it came to the McKernan Creek crossing, the strategies that the city might use to, for the timing of that project would have to be reviewed at that time. So at this point, we're just looking for, you know, the bulk of funding source coming from a supplemental SDC.
Okay, I mean, I guess, I mean, that, that, that's helpful to understand, but, but every time, I don't know, the other counselors think, but every time I've seen us do estimates, we always underdo them. And so like, because there's not a whole, a huge amount of margin, I get really nervous on this. And that's why I was kind of like, could we at least do them now just because, you know, if we can lock in that and do it and do a bond or some sort of action to where we're, we're doing this now. We know these roads are going to cost more next year, even more the year after that sort of thing. Because of that margin wasn't very great between even, even this proposed solution. I'm just a little nervous around this not, still not being enough. And then my others, my second question is like, at the end of the day, like this still isn't Beaverton, right? Like we still haven't addressed the annexation question. So are there things we should be thinking about proactively on annexation, right? Like, like, should we bring these folks in before we start turning shovels to start generating revenue? Or do you have thoughts on that?
We are, we have a lot of thoughts on annexation. We're trying to formulate them as staff. We are planning to have another work session with council to talk about annexation probably in the summer. So, but we are thinking about things like the timing, the phasing, different types of annexation agreements that we can make sure we get the infrastructure that we need. So those are all questions that we're going to have to be continuing to explore over the next several months.
Okay, I'm really interested in that because it's, it's really hard for me to divorce this question without having a solid base on the annexation. And when we're going to start getting revenue from those folks that stand to benefit significantly from the development of Cooper Mountain. So to answer your questions, I do support number one. I think that makes a lot of sense to limit the non potable water systems. And then number two, I, I kind of agree with counselor, both counselors, Teeter and Hartmar Prig on some, so I'd like to see options, whether it be a tier or something to, you know, to, to try and incentivize as much affordable housing as possible. And then I don't have additional comments. Thank you for this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Council Hassan?
Okay, hi, I was like, I wanted you to have your, you all good?
We're good, we're good.
It's gonna be really easy. Thank you so much. The Cooper Mountain plan, I feel like has been going on for many years. And while I want to say, what if we didn't, I will. Number one is great. Number two, I support the other counselors on what they were suggesting and no additional comments. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Tiff, no?
I have two questions that are completely different from each other. So I'll start with the easy one first. I think it's easy. So going back to the southwest corner where the community park is going to go in shortfall, THPRD can't, can't carry the entire cost, which makes sense because it's going to be a community park. Sure, residents of Tigerhead are going to be enjoying it as well as people from outside of both cities in greater Washington County and beyond. What do you think the funding is going to look like for that to get that project done?
Yeah, so we can't say necessarily what THPRD is going to do to prioritize. And when they're going to build out parks and those different features. One thing that was important to us in looking at the potential funding was thinking about implementation and making sure that the SDCs that they're currently charging would be enough to offset the property acquisition cost. Cause we do know that that's part of their process is to like acquire, acquire property at fair rates. So making sure that they can get that property is step one. And so the SDCs for this area look like they're enough to cover that. And then they would need to put this into their long-term capital planning. So they've talked about things at this point, like, you know, looking for grants and outside resources to support building out that community park. Again, if you're looking at ball fields, there's maybe different programs for that sort of thing. But that's going to have to come through their capital planning process and, you know, their long-term rate setting and things like that.
Okay, this is, I think, kind of related to, now I'm thinking about it. Can you go back into the slide that has the Purple Pipe? Okay, so the park is in there, right? The Purple Pipe footprint is shrinking. And I, from what I understand, the more I've learned about it, it's very expensive. And the area in which we're wanting to put it is not exactly the easiest to install, given the elevation gains. So it makes sense that it's looking like it might end up being cost prohibitive to build it out at the higher elevations. I know that there's, there's early planning around potentially having a special SDC that's just for it. And I, I don't like throwing zingers out there. I know everyone else is like, great, but number one, but I'm, I'm curious, like what is the, what's the cost benefit here on, because there's this part in the report where it talks about inclusive development considerations around this. And then it's going to actually add costs to develop this area. This area is the closest to the community park, future community park. It's the closest to the high school. It's the closest to transit. It's the place where affordable housing is probably going to make the most sense. And it just makes me nervous to think that we're putting in something that is maybe not going to be doing what we wanted it to do. Initially, thinking about the whole area of Cooper Mountain having this feature to help with it. And from what I understand, it's, it's not just about preserving drinking water. There was, there's the cost of cleaning water, like there was this whole value proposition to it. And I'm curious with the shrinking footprint, is that affecting the value proposition to the point where? And I'm curious with the shrinking footprint, is that affecting the value proposition to the point where? And I know that past councillors are probably really, really not happy hearing this if they're watching right now before I hear about it tomorrow. Is it, i- is this something that we need to consider taking off the table entirely? I'm sorry, that's probably the biggest zinger I'm gonna throw out there in my entire political career.
I appreciate the question. Um, so this, what I can say is that. Uh, that's what you're describing is one of the reasons that the staff recommendation is to limit. The, um, location for it. I think it's a bigger policy question of whether you want to try to continue to extend purple pipe. My, our, my understanding is that, um, we have direction at this point as staff is to continue to expand purple pipe where it makes sense. Um, so we did look at utility planning. To look at what it would take to get purple pipe throughout this new growth area. So we did feel like we were throwing a zinger at you to say we're only proposing it in the corner. Um, because it is, would just be really cost prohibitive. You'd be looking at equivalent pump stations like we have for drinking water to extend the pipe up the hill. Um, so this is the area that we can extend it to using the existing pump station. Using the existing source, um, using the existing connections that we have between the drinking water system and the non potable system. So that's where the recommendation is coming from as far as this limited, um, whether you guys, whether you want us to explore. More of that cost benefit piece, um, is a question we could entertain.
I, I think that it might be worth doing that. It's almost become symbolic at this point of our commitment to. Um, protecting our water resources and putting them to their highest and best use. So I understand that there's, there's something beyond just the project itself. It's something that we stand for as a community and we've made a ton of. Uh, infrastructure investments when it comes to water that are going to benefit. A lot of people for many, many years, way beyond our lifetimes. And this one has been kind of woven into that, but if it's now, the scope of it has changed so much that it's affecting what its initial purpose was. Um, and what exactly, what are the savings going to be? Both monetarily, um, and maybe even qualitatively. I don't know if we can get to that, but. Uh, I would be interested in, in seeing, I don't know, anyone else here.
Councilor Hartmire Prig.
I just wanted to say thanks for saying it. Um, I, I would love to see the cost benefit. And it, I think it's really fair, like it's, it is something we kind of champion and kind of lean on a little bit as like. Advancing our climate goals, which is true. But is it, is the focus in the wrong place? Is the cost worth it? Um, we have to be asking us ourselves the hard questions. So I just wanted to say that.
Council Teeter.
Uh, council president, I know I've gone once already, so if you want to go first, okay. I just want to build on this idea a little bit. I don't know where I stand on it. Would it be possible to? Sell purple pipe services off to Tiger downhill?
It's not something we've looked at. And I don't know how that would work.
If we could use that as a funding source to expand it in our own service district, that would be very interesting. I have no idea if any of this is possible.
I do, I, I can say, I do know that, you know, we have our source facility for purple pipe. And the water that we're treating and using to put into the purple pipe. We don't have excess water coming from there. So, um, we don't have excess. Or non potable water, um, that we could be selling to someone else from a quantity standpoint. My understanding is that we, um, right now with the way the permits work on that facility. That's likely that we will have to be supplementing with drinking water and the purple pipe to get the whole system to work. I don't have the exact numbers, but we can dig into them further.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, so back to the questions. Yes to both, but then I also, when I was looking at it, is it really cost benefit us to keep going with the purple pipe? I'd like to see the study to see if you're really getting the money and really achieving our initial climate goals. Cost benefit analysis or study, I would appreciate it for the future conversation. Um, as somebody who's using purple pipe right now. It's cost money to use the water. So it's not really saving money per se. As a customer. Uh, maybe in the long run it does, but somebody who's paying the bills, it kind of adds on more because you're required to water the grass. So maybe, maybe in the future, if we don't require to plant so much grass, I mean, that might save more water. Than to use water to water the grass and that was on my mind when I was paying my bills, so. Thanks for the presentation. Is it, is there any other questions?
I had one, right. Um, now you have me thinking how much your water is and how much my water is. We'll have a. Waterway competition. I mean, I support this, but I don't want to slow things down. So I guess, yes, look through what the council is requesting, but I don't want it to like slow down the work that we need to do. And if that's happening, then like tell us, because we will slow you down and we don't want to do that.
Okay, thank you for your report and being here tonight.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Alright. We're really close. I'd like to go home in fifteen minutes.
Well, um, I would like to move that we approve the consent agenda, but with the removal of the traffic commission item TC eight five three.
Second.
Okay, it's removed.
Actually, I should probably ask a clarifying question. Um, Bill, since TC eight five three is part of two four zero one nine, ready to pull two four zero one nine in totality? Okay, thank you.
So are there any comments on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, there are no further comments. City recorder, please take the vote by the roll call.
Councillor Duggar?
Yes.
Councillor Hartmire Prig?
Yes.
Councillor Hassan?
Yes.
Council President Kimmy?
Yes.
Councillor Teeter?
Yes.
Councillor Tivnan?
Yes.
Um, six zero one.
Hey, so councillor Teeter, you asked the councillors to separate, consider traffic commission item TC eight five three in the agenda bill. Two four zero one nine, what do you want the council to do?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna request that the city manager schedule a traffic commission item TC eight five three for a public hearing before city council. And the reason for this request is that, uh, I don't agree with, or I don't have all of the information for regarding the recommendation from traffic commission. And if we hold a public hearing, then the council will be able to decide whether to affirm traffic commission's recommendation or deny the recommendation. Or modify the recommendation. Now, the reason, the reasons why I don't agree with and have some questions about the traffic commission's recommendations are because. Um, some of the things I've gotten written, written here, so. Kind of read through this a little bit. So this traffic commission item was focused on twelfth street around Pilgrim Lutheran School. Where there is a request to reduce the speed limit from twenty five miles per hour to twenty miles per hour as part of a school zone. Now that was denied and the reason was that, one, nobody walks to school. Two, uh, school zone on the street could be ineffective. Three, a school zone on the street could lessen the respect for other school zones in the city. And four, there's been one recorded crash on the street between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty two. So my concerns with it are that we, or traffic commission received emails and public comment from parents. And people with the school who are asking for a twenty, twenty mile per hour school zone so that it would be more walkable. And there was personal testimony from people who were saying that they did walk to school and that they would like to be walking in the area. Uh, so it's not true that nobody walks to school because there are people who are asking for this. Uh, the traffic study quoted in this agenda bill or in this traffic commission decision was also done in July twenty twenty three. When many schools are not in session, so I had some questions about that. And then this ties in with our council goals of safety, quality, infrastructure and community wellness and fun. And slower streets are, uh, at least most of the time safer streets. And so I just wanted us to be able to have a little bit more attention here and dig into a little bit more. Um, than in this agenda bill. Thanks. Oh, wait, wait. In conclusion, thank you. Uh, my motion is that the city manager scheduled, scheduled traffic commission item TC eight five three. For a public hearing before the city council, following the process outlined in the city code.
Second.
The motion for city manager to schedule traffic commission item TC eight five three for a public hearing before the city council has been moved and seconded by. Also Hartmire Prig, is there any discussion? Signal comments, city recorder, please take the vote by roll.
Councillor Tivnan?
Yes.
Councillor Teeter?
Yes.
Council President Kimmy?
Yes.
Councillor Hassan?
Yes.
Councillor Hartmire Prig?
Yes.
Councillor Duggar?
Yes.
Uh, six zero one.
Right, passed. So the final, final item on agenda is council new business. Does anyone have anything they wish to share?
I have a quick one, sorry. Um, I know I'm between us and the door. Uh, I just noticed like a new agenda format sort of maybe, and I love it. There is a lot of clicking, like I have to click to see the things. Is there any way to like? Open a new window or maybe I'll talk to Jenny later. Sorry, I'm, I won't. We'll talk about this later. I was just playing with you today and struggling a little bit, so thank you.
Alright, that concludes our meeting tonight and meeting is adjourned.